Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. You ready, Counselor? Okay. Ready?[16.37][16.37](knocking) Call to order, the Fall Wakefield Town Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by our town clerk, led by our town clerk.[27.82][27.82](inaudible)
The allegiance certified of the United States of America to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You got the... Return of service on it. Yeah. Return of service on the warrant. I, Constable Christopher K. Lopes, hereby certify that I have posted the regular town meeting warrant of November 16th, 2/24. On 10/29/24, Christopher Lopes. All right. What's this?
Warrant.
The warrant? What do I want with the warrant?
You just have to say I gave you the...
Oh, all right. The clerk has given me a copy of the warrant. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Out-of-towners. Let me see. Kathy Cheek, Retirement Department. Sherry Dalton, Town Administrator. (laughing) I'll leave that alone. Ethan Fleming, Conservation. Mr. Zealot, Wakefield, I think. Ann Wyatt, Joe... Joey Conway. Chris Price, Dan McGrath. Craig Calabrese. Oh, yeah, okay. Steve Scory. And Doug Lyons.
Next page.
Oh, jeez. It's a heightened meeting this time, huh? Clearly. Liz Rourke. Lou Rosello. Dennis... Oh, Dennis Fazio. Bill Renault. Karen Burke. And Amy Forzati. Clearly, there are... I've had my ear to the rail. There are some hot-button articles this time. And there have been a bunch of inquiries, sort of ad hoc or pre-town meeting points of information. Just to be clear, and I've discussed this, I don't know if our bylaw guru is in attendance yet, Dan Lieber, but Dan Lieber and Tom Mullin and I went over these things. A lot of people question the amount of time that's allotted for a presentation. First of all, the bylaws say that a speaker, meaning someone speaking on the motion, gets five minutes. That's been in existence for a while now. The charter and the bylaws, if I'm correct, Mr. Mullin, are silent as to the presenters. Yeah, I have always, I probably inherited this from Mario Simiola, but I've always allowed 10 minutes for a presenter. It's an adequate amount of time. You're making a presentation about something that's important. And as you know, like what we do with the VOKE, which we do with a couple of the school presenters, if they're going to go over 10 minutes, I ask them, and we ask them, and we have a motion to entertain more time to speak, okay? We'll do that. And the other thing that we always do is, we get a motion to allow somebody from out of town to speak because you have to give them permission because they're not a member of this body. So those are our rules for today. The first article... Article... Well, and the big, huge exception is, he gets to go as long as he wants. The town administrator has always made his presentation, and so, you know, and Steve doesn't have an interesting Georgia-Florida line quote this time, which is disappointing me, but he will proceed. Article one, to see if the town will hear and accept a report of the fiscal year 2024 budget, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Vote to accept a report of the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Fall town meeting provides a wonderful opportunity for your team at Town Hall to reflect upon the events of the past year. Specifically, we evaluate how your team handled the challenges which came our way from the economic, social, and political sectors. I am pleased to report that due to the thoughtful development and implementation of sound financial policies by the Town Council, Finance Committee, and School Committee, and more, most importantly, the support of the public, Wakefield steadily remains on course for what continues to be a brighter future. Part of remaining on course is the adherence to our quite dry, some would say boring, I don't say boring, but some do, financial policies, which include such guidelines as limiting the use of non-recurring revenue sources and planning models, maintaining adequate reserves, and avoiding volatile revenue projections when balancing budgets. But it is equally important to note that Wall Street and its rating agencies are also reviewing municipalities' commitment to quality of life issues. While in the past only pure financial columns were discussed at bond rating meetings, now the analysis pivots to mental health surfaces, especially in our police departments, which was and remains way ahead of other area departments. Mental wellness commitments through our Health and Human Services Department, as well as commitment to affordable housing and green energy. And yes, in our last recent surveillance, I was asked about our compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. The town's continued adherence to financial policies is critical, but quality of life is now part of the rating rubric. And I am pleased to report that Wakefield continues to maintain the highest available bond rating, AAA, from Wall Street. This lofty designation saves millions of taxpayer dollars on our capital projects as we are able to borrow at lower interest rates. In fact, assuming a modest quality spread of 20 basis points, or about a quarter of a point between a AAA and a AA rating, the taxpayers of Wakefield saved over $3 million in interest payments for the recent borrowing for the high school. I, for one, would much rather have that money in our pockets than Wall Street's. I believe that we can all agree that maintaining the AAA bond rating is a success, but as Mark Twain stated, success is a journey, not a destination. It requires constant effort, vigilance, and reevaluation. Your team is up to the task. As we discussed last month at the tri-board meeting, in order to maintain our high bond rating and adequate reserves, we will certainly need to make sound and prudent decisions over the next few budget cycles in particular. Today, we will request the town utilize $3.85 million in free cash to balance the fiscal year '25 budget. Article three will fund a very important and exciting project at the Galvin where we will be able to provide electrical needs of the Galvin from the rays of the sun. The expected payback is less than four years. Article five will fund the contract settlement for our very important clerical union, and Article six will make sure that we adequately fund our sewer, water and sewer services as water usage has declined over the first quarter of this fiscal year. After all the monies are... And all money articles are completed, we will still retain over 10% reserves per policy, preparing us well for the next round of borrowing for the high school. I am completely proud of your town employees who have answered all the challenges over the past fiscal year. I think we have emerged stronger and more efficient with much better systems of delivering services to the public. And on behalf of the Town Council, all municipal and school department employees, I wish to thank the townspeople for this continued support. But today, we have a little business to do, so now on to the financial aspects of the report. Because Wakefield continues to be a community where many wish to work, visit, and live, we have experienced another year of solid new growth. Last year's new growth, close to 1.1 million. Candidly, I was hoping for more, as I always do. A lot of communities around us, Victor's laughing, I blame him, a lot of communities around us would kill for 1.1 million in new growth. I always want more. We did a little study on what some of the big projects that are in town right now. They seem to be spread out on the construction, so I see consistent new growth over the next foreseeable future, which I'm very happy about. The revenue generated from the local options meals and hotel tax has exceeded our predictions, generating $455,000 in meals and $600,000 in hotel taxes, for a total of $1,055,000. We had projected $850,000, so keep going to dinner downtown, it certainly helps us. We've collected $304,000 for the first quarter of this fiscal year, so we are on a path to exceed last year's amount. Accordingly, our free cash balance has been certified by the Department of Revenue as Our long-range forecast, thanks to Dan Sherman, indicates solid free cash for the foreseeable future. The value of our comprehensive stabilization fund currently stands at over $3.3 million, double where we were in 2008, and the OPEB balance comes in at $33,437,800, up $4 million from last year. I wish to thank the department heads, town employees, the superintendent of schools, Finance Committee, and especially the Town Council for their assistance and leadership this past year. So again, in accordance with the requirements of the Wakefield Home Rule Charter, I'm extremely pleased to present the fiscal year 2024 report for the town of Wakefield. The report is included in our town meeting booklet and has been at the town's website for about four weeks now. I'm happy to report that all town departments managed to stay within or actually expend less than their respective appropriations. Certain departments have also encumbered funds from last year's budget for ongoing projects or bills which carried over from last year. Due to the efforts of the department heads and employees, over $2 million was returned to the town last year. And as I stated, accordingly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Revenue certified our free cash at the amount of $11,620... $11,620,315 as of June 30th, 2024. Finally, the Water and Sewer Enterprise accounts ended the year in a positive manner. I'd like to now address some specific areas, specific department areas. First one is General Government. The General Government portion of the budget includes the Town Council, accounting, IT, treasurer, legal, tax collector, assessor, town clerk, election registration and election expense, Finance Committee, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals. General Government represents approximately 3% of our budget, total all-town budget, or about 2.8 million. These departments returned a total of $185,872 to the town, or 6% of their approved operating budgets. Each individual department is broken down in the report. The General Government also uncovered $18,541 to be used in fiscal year '25. The highlights here are $8,000 for copy printer rentals, which runs through our accounting department, and $8,900 in the assessors for property evaluations. Protections of persons and property. This area concerns police and fire protection, fire alarms and traffic lights, building department, animal control, parking clerk, and emergency management. As a group, these budgets represent approximately 14% of our overall budget, or $15,155,811. These departments, despite a number of retirements and increased calls due to the state of the economy, managed to return $175,476. And I'd like to thank our first responders. The Town Council and I certainly believe, and I think the whole community remain grateful for all their hard work, and we pray for their safety every day. The Human Services area consists of Council on Aging, which manages our senior center, the Health Department, the Recreation Department, and the Veterans Department. These departments have returned $83,654 to the town on a budget of $968,000, or approximately 8% of their budget. The Public Works Department, another area of our first responders, despite their seemingly infinite calls for service, returned $54,416 to the town from normal operations, as well as $274,000 from snow and ice operations. And I've been assured by Joe Conway, our DPW director, that there will be limited snow this year, a dusting on Christmas Eve, and that's it. Right, Joe? Okay, perfect. DPW also encountered... Also encumbered $695,000 for ongoing capital projects. These projects include $9,000 for a new mail machine, $49,578 for stormwater field work as part of our NEPTES projects, as we were not billed last fiscal year, $36,000 for roof and elevator work, which extended into this fiscal year, $23,000 for signage, $43,000 for playground work and trees not completed until fiscal year '25, $532,000 for capital projects, which some of the capital outlay money runs through DPW, so that's why that's in there. These projects were extended into '25, including the great restoration of the Civil War statue, and I believe we have an event coming up, very special event, is it May 31st? Counselor? Counselor Vincent, thank you. That's going to be a great event for the town, and it really looks great. If you haven't had a chance to go out and look at it, please do. It's really one of the best things we've done. The Water and Sewer Enterprise accounts ended the year in the black, returning 4% of their budgets, or $840,000. The encumbrances were for infrastructure improvements, including pressure valves, water mains, gates, grease removal, and infiltration reduction work, which was completed in 2025. Education. The education portion of the budget includes the School Department, Library and Vocational School. These departments all completed the year within budget and returned $79,702 to the town and carried forward $600... Excuse me, $68,433. Questions on Wakefield Public Schools should be directed to the superintendent. The remainder of the budget line items consist of non-department or unclassified expenses, particularly in the area of insurance. As a group, this section returned $306,716, the bulk of which was from the Reserve Fund and unemployment accounts. Workers' comp also returned $39,806 to the town. Again, and I say this every year, the biggest return to the town occurred in the area of group health insurance, returning a little over $1 million, as the mix of specific health plans chosen by employees and retirees produced lower costs. An absolutely great job by our HR department as we work with many individuals to fit their lifestyles to the best and most cost-effective plan. As a whole, Wakefield kept health insurance down at an increase of less of 3% over the previous year. In fact, over the last five years, this department and we have held the line on health insurance averaging 2% to 3% increases. These stack... These numbers stack up very good locally and nationally, so kudos to Amy Benedetto, Forzati, and Karen Dusset for their hard work. And I say this every year, and maybe this year I finally mean it, I don't anticipate large returns like this again. In fact, we talked about this at the tri-board meeting. We're hearing from the state, we're part of the state GIC Plan Group Insurance Commission, that their expenses are... Their premiums are looking to go up around 8%, 10% next year. We'll be looking at that as we go through the budget process, but that's what's going on. For fiscal year 2024, $96,960 was allocated from the Reserve Fund as listed in the recommendation book, and $303,000 was returned to the town. I thank you, as I do every year, for the opportunity to address you this evening, Mr. Moderator. This concludes my report.
Any discussion on the motion under Article one? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that we... The town votes to accept the report of the fiscal year 2024 budget. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such free cash as may be in the Treasury or any part thereof in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period ending June 30th, 2025, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, that the town authorized the Board of Assessors to use $3,850,000 in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. The purpose of this article is to allow $3,850,000 of free cash to be used in setting the fiscal year 2025 tax rate. This amount is necessary to offset the budget to enable the town to be within the allowable tax levy limit under Prop. 2.5. As you may be aware, our submission to the State Department of Revenue reflects very conservative use of non-tax levy income in order to be in compliance with DOR parameters, as well as carefully positioning us in light of any unexpected downturns. This conservative revenue calculations, as well as the very prudent efforts and results of our department heads in the management of their budgets, has led to a consistent growth in our reserves. In fact, as I stated in Article one, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certified our free cash to be at $11,620,315 as of June 30th, 2024. After the use of $3,850,000 to offset this year's budget, the $571,812 for the solar project at the Galvin, and the $53,941 necessary to fund our clerical contract, we will have a free cash balance of approximately $7.1 million, really about half a million more than we had last year after town meeting. We will also have a comprehensive stabilization account of $3.4 million, as well as an, so far untapped fiscal year 2024... Fiscal year 2025 Reserve Fund of $400,000, a sped stabilization fund of $317,000, for a total of over $11.2 million in reserves, miles ahead of where we were, you know, a decade ago. The Town Council recommends favorable action on Article two.
Any discussion on the motion under Article... Oh, you know, all right. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Sullivan. Right.[1162.08][1162.08](laughing).
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Yeah, right. Any discussion on the motion under Article two? There being no discussion. The motion before you is that the town authorized the Board of Assessors to use $3,850,000 in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year 2025. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article three, see if the town will vote to appropriate a sufficient sum of money for the design and construction of a solar array project on the roof of the Galvin Middle School, such project to include all related costs and interconnection with the town's electrical system, and to determine whether to raise the appropriation by borrowing or otherwise, to see what the town will do about it. Mr. McLean.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate by transfer from free cash the sum of $571,812 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McLean.
Mr. Moderator, I would also request that Business Manager from DPW, Ann Waite, be allowed to present on this topic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just some introductory comments for those who haven't followed this as carefully as some of us have. The way this started was that in the spring, I attempted to propose using ARPA funds to do a smaller project on this very roof. While that did not seek favor with the entire Town Council, there was a very, very positive motion made at that time by Chair Chines to come to town meeting and attempt to do the full roof. And, you know, half a roof's better than none, but a full roof is better than half a roof. That's why we're here today. The way this starts is that this building was built and advertised as solar-ready. Solar-ready means, you know, it doesn't mean that there's some work won't have to be done for this project, but this is a great place to do this project. I'm hoping to gain support. There are three main reasons. It's educational. We would have potentially a TV screen in this building where the students would see the feed from the solar edge inverters, the brains of the business, showing the green energy being produced. It's economical. We have a... These are conservative estimates, but we have a conservative estimate of a four-year payback. I would do this, I would recommend we do this if it was a seven or an eight-year payback. But this is also economical. And of course, it's ecological. And the best place to do this is on a roof. There's no shading, there aren't trees up there. This is going to be a very productive array, should you approve it. And Ann will do the presentation, so I won't get into the weeds, but there's some very good economic stimulus reasons for doing this as well. As you hopefully have in your booklet, we have a $200,000 contribution from Gas and Light for the solar renewable energy credits. We have the potential of a 30% cash on top of this $571. We have a potential of 30% from the Treasury for this project because we own it as a town, and we will put in for that just as soon as we can. And we also have $204,600 in ARPA funds as seed money, and we already have that money. That's federal tax money, we have it, and the Town Council has allocated that as seed money for this project. So there's no further ado, I'll introduce Business Manager of DPW, Ann Waite. And I just want to say that this has been a cooperative effort between Gas and Light, between the lead bidder, Soltech, which has done... It's S-O-L-T-E-C, if you have your phone out. There are multiple municipal projects and projects they've done in New England. They're a Canadian-owned company with a significant presence of people in Hockington, Mass., so they're there if we need them. Anyway, I'll turn this over to Ann. Thank you all. And thank you for the robust show of personnel today, however you vote.
Take my stuff out of the way. Ask them to put the PowerPoint up.
Good morning, Ann Waite, Public Works. So a solar array... A solar array is a collection of multiple solar panels that generate electricity. A solar array facing south will have the maximum output. Solar array with less shading, trees, buildings, make better... For better performance. The amount of power generated by a solar array is measured by kilowatt-hours. Direct current is converted by inverters into alternative current. A kilowatt is the amount of energy used by 100... A 1,000-watt appliance running for one hour. Power generation. A REC is a renewable energy certificate, also referred to as renewable energy credit, a way to measure and track energy generated by green energy sources, issued for one... Issued for one mega-hour of electricity generated and delivered to electricity grid. Energy added to the grid cannot be considered renewable unless it has a REC to sustain its environmental benefits. About the Galvin. Completed in 2014 and constructed as solar-ready, so we're ready to go. The FY24 electric bill for the Galvin was $329,480. So why now? The project is viable and will be less viable as the roof ages. There is also a great favorable time for tax credits. So the process. In August of 2024, the town of Wakefield, with the support of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, issued an RFP. We had 10 people interested in the bid materials. On September 10th, we had a mandatory pre-proposal walk-through visit on the roof, and in September... September 26th, all proposals were due. In October and November, we started evaluating those two proposals that we received, and we are here today. Benefits of solar. Long-term savings. In year one, the Galvin electric bill will be reduced by approximately $85,000. Energy savings. Annual energy production is associated... Will be estimated at 506,864 kilowatt-hours. We also expect that when energy production is low, we will be able to have possibly billing tax credits. Benefits of solar. There's an educational opportunity for students, there's environmental impact, solar energy is clean, renewable energy, reduce... It also reduces greenhouse gas emissions, reduces air pollution, and assists in achieving a 2050 carbon-neutral goal. There should be a picture of the Galvin roof up there. It'll catch up. It has a... All the blue areas are solar panels. There'll be 874 solar panels on the roof. Thank you. The type of system that we're proposing is a PV. This uses devices that absorb energy from sunlight and convert into electrical energy through semiconducting materials. The PV system would produce 419.52 kilowatt of direct current with an annual electric production of 506,864 kilowatt-hours. There'll be 874 modulators or panels on the roof. There'll be five converters, a device that converts the energy into... Energy a solar panel generates into the electric grid use. There'll be 440 optimizers. This gets more energy from each panel and allows panels level monitoring, more control and flexibility. It'll be put in in a ballast solar racking system. This minimizes the holes that are needed to put into the roof and the installation and reduces roof risks from the installation. So the cost. It's $976,412, which includes labor, materials. The town will own the array, and the recs will go to the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Of this $976,412, $204,600 has been approved from ARPA funding, and the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light contribution will be $200,000, bringing the request today at $571,812. We also have the opportunity to apply for federal tax credits, which is 30% of the project, which would be $292,800. Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light will... is 30% of the project, which would be $292,800. Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light will cover the cost of the, of $136,000, which is a transformer equipment, engineering studies that are needed. So the net cost of this project would be $279,012. The break-even point is estimated to be year four with a $48,062 positive cash flow, with a cumulative $2 million-plus positive return at year 25. Timeline. If this is approved, we have already started site inspections during October and November. The installation could begin as early as January 25, depending on weather. There'd be no disruption to school schedule, activity, or parking. Anticipated completion could be as soon as June 25. We have a couple of examples in your booklets and not necessarily on the screen, there we go, of the Broadway Water Building and the Municipal Gas and Light Department. Thank you.
Discussion. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Right. I don't know why. It's because we hang out. Yeah, I know.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 3 in the back?
Hi there. Tiana Eldish, 28 West Water. I'm chair of the Wakefield Environmental Sustainability Committee, and I'd like to read a statement from the Environmental Sustainability Committee from our last meeting a couple nights ago. "We, the Wakefield Environmental Sustainability Committee, support the proposal by the town council to install solar panels on the roof of the Galvin Middle School. Solar is a safe and effective means of generating clean energy. Rooftop solar on town-owned buildings is an environmentally friendly and economically sound way forward for Wakefield, and aligns with the town's goals to reduce fossil fuel emissions as outlined in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, and the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department's goal of providing 100% non-carbon-emitting electricity by 2050. It also provides an educational opportunity for Galvin Middle School students to learn about solar energy." Thank you.
Hi, Julie Scott, Central Street. Councilor McLean, thank you so much for your persistence in this article. I think it's a great opportunity for the community. I do have a question for a fire representative, if the fire chief is here, through you, Mr. Moderator?
Fire chief here? No, apparently not.
No, there he is.
Oh! Okay. Well, Sully, you gotta yell out. Come on, here we go.
If you could put the slide back to the picture of the solar panels on the roof, that'd be great. Fire access to the building. Having grown up here in Wakefield when we had an arsonist and we lost a school, I think I already know the answer, but I would like to hear it from the fire chief because I know safety is of foremost concern for all of us. Thank you.
I didn't even get the question. Can you repeat the question, please?
I don't think I stated it. Fire access with the solar panels and the roof.
I don't anticipate any issues with that.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for trekking down here, chief.
Hello. Kevin Fontanella, 11 Emerald Street. I just would like to recommend that we approve this motion. I think this is a no-brainer. I mean, even with conservative estimates that we're going to pay this off within five years, I think that, you know, this is just a very, very easy vote. So I just want to, I just want to say that I recommend a positive vote on this motion.
Dorothy Hoyland, 7 Ballister Street. "I'd just like clarification on the ARPA funding and the WMGLD contribution."
Mike? What clarification can I give you? I mean, we at Town Council in two different meetings appropriated initially 150, and then when we had in another project 54,600 being unused, we moved those two numbers for the 204,600 to this project, should it pass. Otherwise, we would reallocate that. As you may see in the presentation, you know, that's been printed for everybody, also Gas &amp; Light has been very much involved. We've got the chief engineer, Mr. Paulson, here if you have any questions for him. But because the, the unique nature of this project is that the town owns the recs, and those recs are valuable intangibles, and the Gas &amp; Light wants those. So we have, you know, negotiated together and come up with the payment that they have offered of $200,000 for those valuable intangible renewable energy credits. I'm not sure what more I can say about that.
So that, that is to their labor cost? Is that what that is?
That's an outright contribution towards the project, so it doesn't, you know, it'll come from the Gas &amp; Light instead of from the taxpayers.
So it comes from a different fund?
Comes from the Gas &amp; Light, a separate entity, but with, an entity with which we have worked extremely cooperatively on this because, you know, we have the vendor, but we also have the knowledge of our own engineers, and, you know, they will facilitate that ultimate hookup.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Bob McGlaughlin, 376 Water Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I've got some infrastructure questions for this project, and I don't know whether, I don't want to pick on Joe Conway over there, but maybe he may be able to answer that from the DPW?
Joe, do you have any, are you involved in this? Well, then come on down. And I'm not going to say it.
I was a chaperone at nature's classroom with him, so I'm not going to pick on him too much. But I do have some video of that, that little excursion.
I have pictures of him in his Little League uniform, all right, so bang.
There you go. Couple of questions. One is, the, the roof is approximately, if this goes in next, say it goes in next year, the roof's about 10 years old. The shelf life of a roof of a rubber, that's a rubber roof up there?
Correct.
All right. Is about 20 to 30 years, approximately?
Give or take, yeah. Depending on the manufacturer, it might be 20, it might be 30. It depends on what system you're going with.
And the solar panels, my homework says they last about 25 years.
Correct.
Approximately.
Generally, yep.
So if I was doing the math here, I would say that at some point, those solar panels have to come off for a replacement up there on that roof. At some, at these, if those solar panels go on tomorrow, they're going to have to come back off again, re-roof and back on again. So I'm just curious, does anybody know what the hell that would cost?
We don't. What I could tell you is, at the, the beginning of this whole process, one of the first things that Anne did was she engaged, we have an on-call roofing contractor that does a litnea work for us all year long. They went up there and inspected it to make sure that there wasn't anything up there that we didn't see, you know, looking at it every day, and to kind of give us their opinion on whether or not they thought that this was something that we shouldn't be doing. To this point, they haven't indicated anything that would give us any suspicion to recommend not doing this. The other interesting part is that this system will be installed with the roof's warranty in mind, so there'll actually be a pause in the warranty executed, and the way that this is ballasted and connected will have to comply with that to preserve that piece to it. Depending on who you talk to, some people say that the solar array has actually cast your benefit because they're blocking the UV from deteriorating the rubber. So that could happen. Unfortunately, we won't know until, until we know, but I wouldn't expect anything like that to be for some time down the road.
Yeah, I know over time, I know the town had the roofing contractor at the current high school on speed dial. There were so many roofing issues over there. So at some, at some point, it's going to be an issue, you know, with solar panels fixing the roof. But that's okay. Is there infrastructure up at the roof? Do we have any conduits going down into the electric room from, from the roof, or is that all going to be on the exterior of the building?
So part of the solar ready is that the conduits are there. The other thing that we took a look at, too, that you'll appreciate, Bob, is that any penetrations we had, filter access and things like that, it's our goal to make sure that's all maintainable and accessible, very similar to the chief. We have business up there, so this will fit to whatever we have to do on top of that roof to make sure that it doesn't cause us any issues down the road that we're unprepared for.
Okay. Thank you very much. I've got one other question for Mike McLean, if I could through the moderator?
Yes, you can.
And before, before you get there, if I could just follow up on what Joe was saying, you pointed an important factor out. Now, when I was doing my informal survey of roofs in town, I spoke with Maureen Hickey about the building over by Broadway, because there are no trees up there either. And she said, "We have a really, really good rubber roof." And I said, "How old is it?" And she said, "50 years." That was, then you go to the next roof on the left, right? Here, if we don't do this today, I'm not saying it can't be done, but we are running within a certain timeline that you point out. You know, you're not going to get the warranties. You're not going to probably even be able to do a project 10 years from now on this roof, because there's a timeline of, you know, 10 years, maybe to 15, where it even can be done. So either we do it now or we don't. The, my basic position is that whatever happens when this roof ultimately has to be replaced, and I don't think it's going to be in 15 years, that then we will either leave the array if it's still producing or go with whatever the next technology is, because technology seems to improve about every, every other year or less.
Let's get to his question.
Yes, to your question.
Okay. One other, one of the, this is just in general. We've got a headline that came out Friday, November 8th, property taxes going up. So we're getting hit left and right with, with taxes around here. The, the new high school taxes really haven't kicked into our real estate taxes, but it will. And, and this is, and if we don't get the, the federal grant on this, you know, we're, we're at about a half a million dollars on this. I'm not, I'm not going to be disappointed at this, at this article tax. I mean, I, I was going to put solar panels in my house. I got nothing against that whatsoever. It's just timing. And, and I'll be bringing this up at the next article because I think the, I think the town is going to be strapped on the school side of everything around here from what I can, when I, when I can figure out. I think we're going to need the money for the schools, but that's just me. But anyway, that's, that's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
To the extent that there's a-
No, 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 there's no question on the floor.
Oh, there's no question?
No question on the floor.
We're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the motion before you is that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of $571,812 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding the language contained in your program.
Sam's here, yeah.
All right. What we got here?
That, okay.
You gonna make, you make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw and map as described in this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moderator, I would also move that a non-resident, our senior planner, Samantha Elliott, who has made this presentation multiple times already, be allowed to make the presentation to the town meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor? Do we have an approximate time for this presentation?
Yes, I would ask also, because of the complex nature of this and the fact that not everybody in the room may have been paying attention as carefully as we've gone along, this is very complex. We would ask for an extension of an additional 10 minutes, for 20 minutes for an adequate presentation to be made.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike McLean, Town Council Chair. At, we all, I think, know how we got here, and I'll let our senior planner, who I'm so glad we hired, make this presentation. But just introductory comments, we know that in the spring, there were a few options that were quite different from what we're proposing now. We, we have tried to be, the subcommittee that I appointed was myself, Councilor Dombrowski and Councilor Vincent. We have 852 surveys in the middle of summer. I see from the crowd here today that a lot of people, you know, have, have received notice of what, what's, what we're proposing here today. And it isn't, it's a different district than what we had in the, in the spring. Entirely different areas of town that will be affected. We, we hope that you'll give it your consideration. This is a situation where I personally prefer that it passes because I would not want to lose the grant money that we've gotten in the past, and that we are likely to be precluded from receiving in the future if we don't pass this. We can't give you exact amounts because we don't know what grants we're going to lose, and we don't know exactly which ones we're going to apply for prospectively. But we have that historical five-year, 3.7 million marker. It just kind of gives you an idea that, that we, we wanted that, you know, we want to continue to receive those monies. That's our tax dollars, by the way. And, you know, in, in, in terms of the future, you know, we do have a healthy town budget, as Town Administrator has said, but boy, you know, we've got a lot of labor costs, a lot of that money is spoken for. So when you have a project, like a road project on Albion Street, and you can get a million dollars or half a million dollars, that's money that we, in the future, I think are really going to need. So anyway, I will pass this over to senior planner Samantha Elliott. Thank you very much for your attendance and listening.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. I've seen a lot of your faces at various public engagement events that the subcommittee has held. So just a brief overview. If you have not heard of MBTA communities, it was a state law that was passed in 2021, getting a little bit of reverb. To, the goal of MBTA communities was to increase the year-round market rate multi-unit housing supply, which has, in various capacities, been touted as a housing shortage, which I'm not getting into debating the merits of that, just kind of giving you the background information of the goal of MBTA communities. Any community who is serviced by the MBTA, there are about 177 of them, you can see in teal on this map up here, they are required to meet it in some capacity. They are filtered either or classified as a bus community, a rapid transit community, or a commuter rail community. We are currently tra, we are currently categorized as a commuter rail community and required to provide a district with 36 acres, a minimum of 1,696 potential units, at a density of 15 units per acre, which translates to about a three unit per traditional lot. And 75% of that district needs to be within a half-mile radius of one of our station areas, which we have three of them. There's the Wakefield Station downtown off of North Ave. There's the Greenwood Station that's down in the Greenwood area off of Main Street. And then we have a little area that kind of overlaps with Melrose's, Melrose Highlands site. So through the MBTA Communities Law, the State EOHLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Living, Livable Living Communities, requires us to create a multifamily district that allows multifamily by right with no special permits, rezonings, variances, et cetera. And the district is, the formula that they came up with, these numbers is, is based on a very complicated formula that has to do with what type of transit you have access to, the station area and the existing housing stock. The previous iteration of MBTA communities was voted on at spring 2024's town meeting. The process included public meetings, surveys, forums, and a lot of engagement. On the warrant, there were technically three different options. The planning board had a sponsored district and bylaw along with an alternative plan. And then there was also a citizens petition that went forward. None of them were approved. And these development areas or these proposed districts focused primarily on increasing the density of single-family residential neighborhoods. The town council decided in the summer of 2024 to come back and create a subcommittee to engage the public again, hoping to find a district that they could put forward to vote on at fall town meeting that would reflect the needs and the requests and concerns of the community while also managing to keep intent with the goals of the MBTA Communities Law. So through, in about, less than 100 days, there were public meetings, a survey that went out in August with 852 responses, as well as two large public forums and a number of different coffee hours that were provided. The survey itself showed over 50% were looking for, were open to offering support for a different district. showed, over 50% were looking for, were open to offering support for a different district. The areas that were requested to be focused on were Foundry in, in order. Foundry, Audubon, Melrose Highlands, Wakefield Station, and then potentially looking at Salem Street or Quantapallet Parkway, which were some different off-site areas. A lot of people really wanted to make sure that they were with, the potential developments were near public transit, within walking distance of amenities, and near existing commercial corridors. So the survey really showed some great guidance for the Subcommittee on creating a new district that kind of met some of these concerns, as well as, again, stayed intent in keeping with the intent of the MBTA Communities bylaw. So the district that they proposed has four character areas. The character areas allow for the varying heights and densities and setbacks that are reflective of these existing development areas. So the four character areas, there's the industrial loft character area on Foundry, there's a high-rise residential character area on Audubon, there's the neighborhood commercial character area on Albion and Greenwood, and the North Avenue mixed-use character area on North Ave. The hatch lines that you see on here are for illustrative purposes only. They are not showing the actual districts. The colored areas are the districts. These hatch lines show the parameters that the state gave us, that you have to have a district within a half-mile radius, or at least 75% of our district has to be within a half-mile radius of one of the train stations. So that's just to kind of give you a visual of that. PowerPoint isn't working. So just a little more information about character areas. There it goes. The way a character area works is that, kind of, if you look over at Foundry, there are larger buildings, they have larger massing, there are taller structures. But as in, on Albion or on North Ave, you have lower buildings. And so to be able to have that varying density, height setbacks that reflect the development patterns of the area, you really want to be able to capture that and reflect that in these different standards. So each area, each of the character areas that I went over earlier, the four of them, have different standards. So I'm going to go through those really quick, or at least as, as quick as I can. The industrial loft character area is on Foundry Street. By right, you could build a structure up to five stories, it could be residential in its entirety, or the first floor could be commercial, and then have residential on top of it. The setbacks would be relatively consistent with the area, so a 10-foot front and side setback, and then a 15-foot rear setback. The maximum lot coverage would be 60%, so nothing will be completely built out like some of them are currently. And it will require 1.5 spaces per unit for parking, which is consistent with residential development around Wakefield. Two examples of this area are the Foundry Lofts and Grayson Lofts. Now, Grayson Lofts is six stories and would not be able to be built by right under MBTA Communities. So you would have less of an impact of any potential future development. In this particular area, I just want to call out these darker areas that you see on the map. The darker the parcel, the more dense it is. Most of them are already built out. There was a lot of request from the public to capture existing development, because Wakefield has made such an effort in the last five to 10 years of really supporting, increasing the variety of housing, really meeting that concern of missing middle housing, and you want to be able to reflect that. Whereas there are other municipalities that are considered MBTA Communities that haven't done that. So the only way that we were able to do that is kind of capturing the existing development. So that's why this is overlaid, and the, the district boundaries are kind of zigzagging. A lot of that is to reflect the concerns of the public, where they really wanted, again, those developments to be captured, such as the Foundry Lofts and Grayson Lofts up here. So one of the next character areas, the high-rise residential character area, this is over off of Audubon, where Pleasure Island used to be, if any of you remember that, or have learned about that. Currently, there is a 12-story building. It's Colonial Point. It's residential. There's 176 units. It could go up to 418. However, there is a much smaller area that could be developed. It is really only the northwest corner of the parcel. The hatched area shows where there is wetlands and a watershed, which means it's, it's in a drinking area, a water supply, drinking water supply area, and needs to have a 200-foot setback. So the existing building, which you can't see because it's in a hatched area, would actually have to move. Any new structures would have to move back. And so you would have more protections for wetlands. We actually reached out to Conservation Commission, and they offered their support on this particular site, because, again, it does actually provide more protection than they can mandate from somebody. Additionally, the existing structure is 12 stories in height. Any new structure would be 10. So it would be a smaller, a lower structure, as well as providing some additional buffers. But whether or not that's built is an entirely different story. This is kind of another off-site district that was requested. It was the number one choice in the survey for having an off-site location to provide an opportunity for meeting the intent, again, of the MBTA Communities. The next district is the North Avenue Mixed Use District. This is a mandatory mixed-use district, which means there is only mixed use. It can't just be an apartment building. So there would be commercial on the first floor, and then two stories of residential on top, or up to. Nobody has to build up to three stories. And again, whether or not this gets developed, it's a whole different conversation. But the maximum building height would be three stories, and it would be traditional setbacks that you would find in a commercial character area, or any kind of neighborhood commercial area that services residents. So you'd have a zero front, zero front setback, and a zero side setback. And just as a side note, there are no single-family residential structures that are involved in any of these districts. They are all already existing multifamily, commercial, or industrial uses. So there would be minimal impact on residential. And the maximum height, again, allowed by right under North Avenue's mixed-use character area, is actually shorter than the Tonos building. It would only be up to three stories, so it would be very minimal. And then any developer would still have the right to go through a special permit process and allow for a taller building, but it would have more public engagement, and a lot more conversations with the public, with ZBA, and with the town. So if you're kind of looking for an example of what mixed use could look like, yes, I know that this is Main Street, it is not North Ave, but it gives you a really great picture, because you can see the historic development patterns. You'd have first floor commercial, and either office or residential spaces historically above. And so these taller buildings are very consistent. This is looking north on Main Street, if you're curious, and shows just kind of the overall three- and four-story height that you would have found in these commercial character areas. The next commercial character area, or the next character area is the neighborhood commercial character area, which is on Albion Street. So it permits two stories by right, and it can be resident, two stories of residential by right, or mixed use, where you'd have the first floors commercial, and the subsequent two floors as residential. So up to three stories if you're doing mixed use. Again, it would have similar setbacks to North Ave, where you'd have a zero front, zero foot front and side setback, which is consistent with commercial character areas. Zero parking requirements for commercial spaces, as consistent with the downtown area currently in Wakefield, and then 1.5 spaces per residential unit. And all of that would need to be met on-site without additional variances or other discretionary permits. You can't go under this and, and still ask for a zoning waiver, or a parking waiver, or anything like that. You would need to meet all of this on-site in order to develop these. So this particular area, you can see, has a mixture of commercial, which the gray spots that are just showing up as green within the boundaries of this, are the commercial uses. Anything that is colored is a residential use. If you ever want to go look at this, it's called Residency. It's available online. It's free. But it shows you what the existing density is. There's an apartment, a garden apartment building, that's about four and a half stories, because it's going down a hill at the corner of Richardson and Foster. And there, that's on the rightmost parcel on the map that's colored. So there is some existing residential in this area. And so the residential or mixed-use components would be consistent with development in the area. Another commercial character area, neighborhood commercial character area would be on Greenwood, at the intersection of Greenwood and Main Street and Oak Street. This area kind of all comes together to service that commercial, neighborhood commercial area, but have similar, the same exact conditions to what I just went over for Albion Street. And again, this is all currently either commercial or multifamily residential uses. There are no single families that will be impacted by this area either. Kind of looking for some examples of neighborhood commercial character area. On the left, you see a proposed structure on Water Street, where you have first floors commercial, and the subsequent floors as residential. On the left, or I'm sorry, on the right, you see Albion Street, a historic photo. This shows the pedestrian engagement that you would see, and the variety of uses that you historically saw on Albion Street. So you have the Wakefield item, which had a corner entrance, and then large storefront glass. It allowed for pedestrian engagement, also allowed for visible active uses, which is a requirement of any mixed-use building. You can't just have a lobby down there. You need to have commercial space that would go to a restaurant, or a store, or co-working space, something along those lines, to allow for engagement and services to provide the community with. So, or just kind of to give a really large, quick overview of the MBTA Communities' proposed overlay district, you'd be looking at 1,722 units. That provides only a 1.5% buffer, based off of what the requirements are for, from MBTA. The buffer is, is a recommendation from our Town Council Subcommittee, as well as from our consultant, in case, for some reason, any, any of the parcels that we had selected, once they go back to the state for a more thorough review, for some reason can't be included. It allows us a little bit of a safety net. But generally speaking, most of these parcels are already developed. You can see there's 876 existing units, and there are 65 units that are under construction that are not included in this number. Whether or not these can be built has been one of the big questions that has been brought up. And the most important thing that we want to make sure that you understand is that none of these are mandated to be built. Most of these are being overlaid over existing structures that have either been recently built within the last 10 years, or have existing contracts on them that don't allow them to be demolished, at least for an extended period of time. So there are a number of structures that could potentially be built, but they would have to meet, again, all of the requirements of the overlay, or they would have to go through a special permit process, and that's discretionary zoning that would be reviewed by the ZBA. To continue on, the question also has been brought up about whether or not this is affordable housing. It's not entirely set up as affordable housing. It's designed to be market rate owner or rental, ownership or rental housing. It is not a shelter. It is not an immigrant facility. It is not all subsidized, and it is not all affordable. The MBTA Communities' law allowed for a 10% affordability component. The Town Council Subcommittee chose to include that 10% that begins at eight units and rounds up. So if you have eight units, then one of them would have to be affordable. And affordability is calculated from the HUD 80% AMI, which is the area median income, and that is for one person, $91,200. And it increases by about $13,000, as you add an additional person, all the way up to eight people in a household, which is maxing out at 171,000. And if you're asking who lives in these, these are architects, teachers, firefighters, small business owners, grocery clerks, servers at your local restaurant, postal workers, recent grads. They're people who are pivotal to the community, and work on a lot of essential services. And then the efforts that have been made currently in Wakefield since 2015, there was an inclusionary zoning component to get us closer to our SHI. I know there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing and 40Bs coming in, and a lot of concern that this would potentially spur some of that. We are very, very close to our 10% number, which gives us safe harbor. We're also working on the housing production plan, which is going to help support the town in our housing goals and objectives, and get us, again, closer to that safe harbor. If you hadn't grabbed a survey out there, or they were gone, for the housing production plan, feel free to send me an email. You can access it online as well, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about affordable housing. The other component that the MBTA Communities was really looking for is year-round housing. So in this particular area, short-term rentals will be explicitly prohibited. It is not a use that is permitted within the MBTA zoning overlay. And if you're curious what noncompliance looks like, there is a lot of information, and I'm going to go over it as quickly as I can, and not in too much detail, because I believe you all have a handout which lists all the different grants. We do risk current and future grant funding, and of course, the AG may sue the town. Not only do we face the cost of legal action, but we are, we could end up being forced to comply. And we may or may not, at that point, have a say in the district. So if you really, this is one of our last opportunities to be able to have that conversation about where you want the district to be located, and whether or not you want single-family homes to be implicated as, and impacted as part of this. These are a list of the grants as of October 10th. They are continuously expanding. We don't have control, obviously, over what's being added. The most recent one was a supplemental Metco grant for special education. Some of the language that can actually be found on the Department of Educare, Elementary and Secondary Education, it's explicit right here, that you must comply with MBTA Communities Act. So we are facing an ever-increasing list of grants, and they have gotten, while 3.7, the number has gone around of 3.7 million, it is potentially increasing, because we do not know what additional grants could be added to that. And I'm not here to try to scare you, I'm just trying to make sure that you have all of the information. And over the years, we can, we have gotten progressively more grants. You can't just divide that number by five years, because it depends on what we apply for, and what other projects we have coming on. Also, just as a quick side note, it's not just a punishment-based system. They are also offering the MBTA Communities' Catalyst Fund, which offers an additional grant that we would be eligible for, should we choose to have an approved district. The different public engagement has been offered. We did send postcards to everybody who was located, who was a property owner, within one of the potential districts. So if you got one of those and are here, thank you for coming. There was an information packet that was available online, as well as at some of our coffee hours, and of course, a number of on-demand videos anybody can go back and watch. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any, but I don't want to take up too much
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. That's my job. Hey, by the way, your phone is next to your bag. I don't want you to step on it. I knocked all your stuff over.
That's okay.
It'll be crunch. You'll be like, yeah, okay. You're not up.
Planning Board.
Oh, Planning Board, right. There is a reason you give me this. There is a reason you give me this.
I know, that's why.
Jim Hogan from the Planning Board. The Planning Board recommends favorable action on this article. While this may ne, may not be the perfect map, for the Planning Board's deliberations, we feel as if it represents a quality compromise, based on all the different input through the entirety of the process, both for this map's development, as well as the previous map's development. And the Planning Board also agreed that the financial implications of non-conformance was not something that we felt was a responsible stewardship of the town's financial resources. So for that reason, the Planning Board has recommended favorable action.
Two more out-of-town residents, Catherine Hewitt and David Paulson. Pardon?
No, I announced your name. Yeah. Earlier. All right. Any discussion? Oh, folks, you got to sit down. Got to sit down, because they're going to, I'm pretty sure there's going to be a count on this vote. I don't know. I'm not clairvoyant. But yeah, you got to take a seat, or your vote won't count, so why stay? No, I'm not kidding. You have to sit down. It's not a suggestion.
Plenty of seats down.
Plenty of great seats down front.
Does that guy work here? I think he works here.
Front row. Any discussion on the motion under Article 4? How did I know?
Good morning, Mr. Moderator.
Did you make those signs yourself? I just want to know.
Possibly.
Okay.
No, the Easter Bunny made them, sorry.
Okay.
First of all, I just wanted to do a little review on where this, where this whole thing came from, to begin with. It started with the Economic Development Bill, when Charlie Parker was governor. It was Bill H. 5250. And this, this MBTA zoning thing that we're talking about was buried into that bill. And it was voted on at 4:00 in the morning, January 6th, 2021, at the end of the 2019-2020 legislation session, while we were sleeping. And it was only three, it was three paragraphs long. That's exactly what it was. And as you can see, they've expanded this slightly after the three paragraphs. But anyway, Charlie Parker voted this, he signed the bill, and, and here we are. This is an unfunded MBTA zoning mandate. And it's got a, as we all know, December 31st, 2024 deadline to comply with. And I know there's grants and there's lawsuits involved, but I feel we're being bullied, quite frankly, by the state house. It started with It started with four buckets of funding, different funds, and they just keep on expanding, expanding, and changing, and changing, and changing. And who knows? If we pass this, who knows what the zoning, whether they're going to be expanding on that too also. We're big kids in this town. We've had our own zoning since the Planning Board was put together back, and I think it was nineteen fourteen. We've had a master plan that started in nineteen twenty-five. We've had one in nineteen sixty-one, nineteen eighty-seven. I was the chair of the Master Plan Committee on the startup in early two thousands. I believe that's still current. I don't think the new master plan that they're working on has been adopted yet. I feel that all these cities and towns, all one hundred and seventy-seven of us, have spent a lot of time doing master plans, and of course, we didn't have the foresight to know that this was going to get pulled off twenty-something years ago, but I don't know how that's going to affect all these other towns and our master plans, to be honest with you. I'm not in favor of one single square inch of this town being rezoned by somebody at the State House. We have more knowledge about what's going on in this town than they ever will. And the bigger thing is, I don't think we can afford to say yes on this. And we have to vote on facts, not feelings, and I don't want to drag our superintendent schools into it, but last spring, I asked the question, are our schools at capacity, particularly the elementary schools? And they are. We're tight. We are literally tight. And Dr. Lyons indicated then that there was sixty pre-K students that we didn't have room for them. And we're going to have to have room for them in the first grade, and so I think we're short of classrooms. And I think that's going to be a real problem going forward, not only in the elementary schools, but possibly over in the school. I know the high schools got some capacity built in, but we are, right now, we've got runaway growth, and that's not catching up with the growth for the schools. All right. I just guesstimated a thousand new housing units either going up or under construction, occupied, under construction, or being permitted right now without the MBTA stuff. And, I mean, nobody can tell me there's not going to be some kids in those buildings. Of course there is. So it's going to get amplified if this MBTA thing goes forward. And it's regardless, moving the deck chairs around, around town, the different zones, I mean, I compliment everybody that did the hard work on this. I fully understand the nature of their tasks, but the reality is, is that, you know, you add another seventeen hundred housing units, regardless of whether they're on a five-story building or a single-family house that gets knocked down and four apartments go in there, they're still going to add. The capacity for our schools just isn't there to pick up all this slack. So that's the, what else have I got here? Oh, yeah. By the way, up to recently, and of course, we're going through, all the towns are going through town meetings right now. A lot of them waited to vote on this until the-
Thirty seconds.
Oh, come on. All right, okay, anyway.
By the way, it's Charlie Baker. Not the deceased saxophonist, okay?
I got that confused.
Yeah, could have left that part out.
Anyway, I'll wrap it up. Seventeen other towns voted this thing down. Marblehead, Norwell, Wilmington, there's a whole bunch of them and probably a lot more, you know, going through these town meetings. So I think the, yeah, I'm not voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, 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 no. You probably are new. This is not a pep rally. You're a legislative body. You're here to listen to information and make a vote. You can all cheer on the way out. Thank you. Next.
Alexandra McCarrick, fifty-three Eustace Ave. I'd like to piggyback right off of what the previous speaker said. Our schools are at capacity. We do not have the ability to have more kids in our schools. If you look at what Desi is threatening to take away from us in terms of grants, none of them mention infrastructure. It's all social-emotional learning, health, this, X, Y, and Z, academic things. Yes, we need the core literacy program, some of the things that we do get in these grant fundings, but at the end of the day, if we don't have the infrastructure to have these students in the classroom, what the point of these grants? And legally, they cannot be holding these things over our heads. This is fear-mongering, this is threatening, and at the end of the day, this town needs to stick by what we voted on in April and vote no. That's all I got.
Next.
No collapsing.
Yeah.
Scott McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. I'd just like to start, just a quick shout-out to WCAT for everything they do to put on these town meetings, knowing a little bit about what it takes. I've seen Ian running back and forth to make sure the closed caption is working. Great job, thank you. I want to compliment all the people that have been involved in putting all this together because they have been extremely transparent. I've been very contentious for the past year with them. They've been very gracious to me in all of my comments. I do have concerns about how this all came here today. I don't think any of it was intentional. I do believe it was flawed. I think there were some issues with the process of it, but that aside, I think this is bad for the town. We've mentioned the schools are at capacity. We already have five-hundred-plus units of building currently in the pipe works now. Even if you do state statistics, twenty-eight percent of each household has kids, Wakefield, even if you're conservative and say twenty percent of each households with five-hundred, you know, you're talking a hundred kids at eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars per student, that's going to increase our taxes. Not to say that we won't want kids, you know, have children come up through this town, but we really need to look at where we're at with our schools because we just don't have a place to put them. So we really need to look at what type of funds are going to go towards that with, you know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty million dollars per school. We're talking five schools, elementary schools are involved in this whole district process. It's a big substantial number when you consider the amount of grants. I did go through, and I added up the grant numbers that are listed on your thing, and it's three point five-two and not three point seven. But I had a question, and this might be for Ms. Elliott, if I may. The district compliance letter, has that come through from the state, if I may, through the moderator?
For, we don't have a district that's been proposed yet, so we don't have a compliance letter. We are in compliance with our effort to at least state our desire to comply, but that's the first step that we're in.
So this whole current district has not been submitted to the state yet for approval?
We didn't have the capacity to do it. We had a ninety-day turnaround on the meetings, the surveys, and creating an entirely new bylaw and map. We would have required a ninety-day turnaround from the state in order to provide that, so there wasn't time for that.
So they could come by back after this is done and say, this doesn't comply, you need to change this, and we may have to come back. And the reason I say that is because a compliance letter just went out to thirty-three communities, which I believe they've got the email on this the other night, that the EOHLC may rescind a determination of district of compliance or require changes to district to remain in compliance. So they could come back afterwards and say, nice try, but sorry, we don't think Audubon Road really fits in. We're going to take that twenty-five percent off. Now you're going to have to stick it downtown somewhere.
No, we've actually already had to, we've reached out to the Attorney General's Office and got a preliminary review. Well, we haven't gotten a formal review from the EOHLC. We have gotten it from the Attorney General's Office, and it's in compliance. Additionally, we have already had multiple conversations with the state and our consultant who's had a number of different districts that have gone through in different places around the state and have no concerns that that would come back. That particular section of the letter is just in case there are any typos, errors, or boundary issues that would be required to be amended. Same thing happens in almost any legal paperwork that you sign.
Okay. So in my understanding, and I've asked this question before, so in order to be in compliance with this, there has to be a contiguous zone, which is that whole North Ave corridor area? Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm wondering, because on the map that you've shown, there is a property between Tuttle Street and North Ave that's included on the map, but it is not listed in the list of addresses that you have. So I guess my question would be through the moderator to Mr. Mullen, the list of addresses that are in the town warrant need to match what's on the map?
Tom Mullen, I'm the Town Council. There's no legal requirement of listing properties in a warrant article. That's done purely for informational purposes here and transparency. What counts is the zoning map, the proposed amendment map, which is on file with the town clerk. And if that map shows a parcel, even if the parcel was inadvertently left off the non-mandatory list, then it is part of the district.
Right. I would ask, if we could with this presentation, to go to the actual map that's in the book? If we could?
Just slow, hold on for a second.
Just so you know, I stopped it during their responses. You've got like a minute-ten, just for your planning purposes, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Right there. So this is the map, this is the map that was printed in the item. This is the map that's on file at Town Hall. I would ask if, from that map, if anybody could tell if even Albion Street and North Ave is included on that map?
Is that rhetorical?
Well, a little bit. So it's without the listing of the streets, people really have no idea whether sixty-three Albion or five Tuttle Street or whatever number Audubon Road, because Audubon Road, printed on the map, was in black and white, so you couldn't even tell it was a district. So it's very difficult. Zero North Ave, which ironically is owned by the MBTA, is not included in the list of addresses, so I think that we should probably include that. But I'll leave that to Mr. Mullen.
I agree that if you're in the back row, that map on the screen is pretty hard to read, but I'm looking at what's on file in the town clerk's office. It's a plan dated October three, two thousand twenty-four, which was clocked in at the clerk's office on October thirty, two thousand twenty-four, plenty of time in advance of this town meeting. And it's pretty big, and I think it's extremely clear that we're talking about a single contiguous district.
Correct. And that's not the map that was used for this, and that's not the map that was printed in the paper, and that's not the map that was sent to the Planning Board. Because all, previous maps prior to that did not have October third down in the bottom corner, so I just want to point that out, and that was clocked in October thirtieth. And this says, see map dated October third, which was part of the original article that was submitted. So that was changed.
Okay, this map is dated October third.
Correct.
So it matches up with the article that is before you and with the article that was posted two weeks in advance of today's meeting. That's what counts legally.
Right.
Okay? I don't care whether there were efforts that resulted in some sloppiness prior to two weeks ago. Legally, what counts is, two weeks prior to this meeting, was there a clear correlation between the map and the article that were posted? And there was such a correlation.
So a map that was altered after this entire process took place to get it onto the warrant article and date stamped after all that voting went on is considered legal for this process?
That process that you refer to is intended to perfect the article and the map. Necessarily, there can be changes made during that time. What counts is whether there were changes made after the article hit the town warrant as posted. And from that perspective, this is a perfectly fine process.
Okay. I just want to say that this guidelines for this has changed three to four times since it initially came out. If you look at forty-B and been in effect for fifty years and how much that's changed over this time, forty-eight is the next forty-B. Things are going to consistently change. It's disgusting that the state has decided to take away fundings from Metco as part of this whole process. It's literally, it's disgusting.
Fundings from Metco as part of this whole process?
It's not going to stop. When they decide that this map isn't in compliance because it hasn't all been vetted by the state yet, they're going to come back and say, well, you need to change and add to it. We've indicated two and a half zones definitely that were a half mile.
Thirty seconds.
The state's going to come back at some point and say, oh, you know what, we're not getting enough housing out of this. You need to add more to this district. You need to expand within those half-mile ranges. It's not going to stop. I'm just saying, they can't take control of our zoning unless we vote ourselves into it, state law. That's the whole reason we're here. Otherwise, they would have just told us to do it. So I'm voting no. I think everybody can come to that conclusion by my statements today.
Thank you.
I just think it's flawed. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, you gotta sit down. You gotta sit down or you're just wasting your time here because your vote won't count. You gotta sit down anyway, so. Plenty of great seats down here. You can see those little streets on the map.
Hi, my name is Allison Lee and I live-
Whoa, 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 hold on, I'm going to let these people sit down. Thanks. Because they're eager to get good seats. Okay, got it. Okay, got it. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Allison Lee and I live on one oh-one Gould Street with my family. I've lived in Wakefield my whole life and attended the public schools growing up. I'm here to speak in support for the multifamily overlay districts. I work in the affordable housing field and I'm confronted with Massachusetts housing crisis every day. I hear of incredibly needed projects that are put on hold for years because of the local zoning process, which ultimately makes them more expensive to build and delays affordable units from coming online. I am also confronted with the lack of affordability in Wakefield and in this area in my own housing decisions. I live at home with my mom, hoping to save for a house one day. That house will likely not be in Wakefield given the average home prices here. As a single person, I could not contemplate trying to rent here as paying two thousand dollars or more in rent would leave me rent burden despite my good job. The proposed zoning, sorry, this proposed zoning will allow for the creation of housing units in walkable communities with access to public transportation. New homes means new options for seniors to downsize and opportunities for young people and families to stay or plant roots here. New residents will benefit the local economy as they patronize local businesses and draw new businesses here that will occupy the empty storefronts that we can all see walking down Main Street. I support the proposed multifamily overlay districts and the opportunity to create more affordable housing units in this town. Thank you.
Anybody know how to do that? That's okay.
Keats Inn earlier, three Montrose School Lane. A question for Ms. Elliott and possibly for anyone on Town Council who can address this. So I've heard informally that the town of Milford is actually engaged in a lawsuit against the state right now in trying not to comply with this. And I think the rough figure I've heard is that they're spending about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in legal fees, and they're not expected to actually win. Do you, are you aware or is anyone aware of, if you can speak to this?
Mr. Mayo has.
Yes, that's Milton, by the way, not Milford. I heard Milford, but that's okay. Milton is engaged in a suit right now with the SJC. They did opt to go for outside counsel on that, so I've heard the two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars too, but I don't know, we don't run their books. It is a case of first impression, so maybe they felt they needed to go outside. If we were to be sued by the city and fighting the suit, it would be, it rests with the Town Council on whether they would go outside to hire outside counsel. My recommendation would be to them, if asked, and I don't want to be presumptuous, but maybe they would, I think that we have the best Town Council in the world, and we would beat the crap out of him, he's on salary anyway, and we would use Tom Mullen, so that would be my advice to that. And he's already in the budget.
Okay.
Tom, will you need an associate? Just wondering. Yeah, okay, all right. Mr. Dombrowski alleges that he has some information to add to that.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Ed Dombrowski, I'm a member of the Subcommittee. To answer your question as well, one of the biggest challenges we have with the current status is it did go before the Supreme Judicial Court, the SJC, back in October, I believe, but we don't have a decision yet from the SJC. And the SJC decision will likely be very informative on a number of the issues that are being raised here today. Unfortunately, neither our community nor the other one hundred and seventy-six that are affected by this will have that answer in time to make that decision. We expect the SJC decision will probably come out later this year or even potentially in early twenty-twenty-five. And unless and until we have that, we're not going to- And unless we, unless and until we have that, we're not going to know. But I do think whatever the SJC ultimately rules will be the precedent that will be set, you know, for our community and all the others.
Thanks, thank you. Are you answering his question?
Yes, I had one last thing to add. You had asked about how their process works. If you've read anything in the paper, Milton is looking at getting themselves partially reclassified and also pushing back on the state. So, there's two issues that they're looking at. In surrounding towns, we have a number of them that already have approved districts. So, Arlington was approved in October 2023, Burlington in May of 2024, Danvers in February of 2024. Lynn is going before their city council in November at the end of the month. Linfield was approved just last, earlier this week, on the 13th of November. Malden in December 2023, Medford in December 2023, Melrose is currently in progress. North Reading's failed at their October Fall Town Meeting. PBD is currently in process. Reading was just approved last week as well on the 14th. Revere has an approved district. Salem was approved in September 2023. Sawgus is currently in progress. Stonem in October 2022, Swamp Scott in May 2024. Wilmington is scheduled for town meeting in December 7, 2024, on their second iteration as well. Winchester was approved in April of 2024, and Woburn in October of 2024. So, there are a lot of complying towns. I know that there are some that are facing lawsuits or refusing to be in compliance in any capacity, but there are a number of our abutting and surrounding towns that are currently in compliance with this.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the transparency and all the additional thought that's been put into coming up with this compromise plan. I guess, you know, when I think about it, we may not like the fact that this is a law, but it is. And when we think about the additional load that we'd be putting on, you know, potentially our own, our own town council, the lack of grants that we could be missing out on, $3.5 million is a very large number. I, I just don't see any reason not to pass this, so I'll be voting yes.
Quick, quick, turn it off.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Bossy, 89 Outlook Road. And, Mr. Moderator, I'm here to speak in favor of voting yes on this article and compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Now, I'm not here to speak on the matter of the MBTA Communities Act as a matter of policy. I'm here to vote yes, because voting yes on Article 4 is the only way that this town can sustain the rule of law and the right of the majority in a democratic republic to govern and to legislate. Now, some people have said that the MBTA Communities Act isn't valid because it violates our state constitution. But if you read our state constitution, that just doesn't really hold water. The Massachusetts Constitution confers broad powers upon the legislature. Part 2 grants the legislature the power to make all laws, quote, "As they shall judge to be for the good and welfare of this commonwealth and for the government and ordering thereof." Now, some of the opponents of this article have referred to the Home Rule Amendment, but the Home Rule Amendment says that, quote, "Any city or town may exercise any power or function which the general portis, which the general court has power to confer upon it, which is not inconsistent with the constitution or laws enacted by the general court in conformity with the powers reserved to the general court." Our constitution is clear. The Commonwealth can restrict the power of zoning that is normally conferred upon the cities and towns, and our elective representatives have done so. Now, I brought this up because I generally see two types of opponents of this article. One of them believes that this law is unconstitutional. I believe that my analysis there just contradicted that. Some people, though, even though they accept that the MBTA Communities Act is constitutional, they want us to go against it anyways. And they have this model in their heads that we're going to get together with the other towns, do a form of civil disobedience, and essentially force the state to back down. But even if you think we're dealing with a bad law here, this is a dangerous path to take. We live in a federal democratic republic where we divide the powers of government between federal, state, and local levels, and at each level, the majority elects representatives, and the representatives enact the laws. Even if, even if a majority of this town opposes that act, a majority of the Commonwealth supports it, both in their elected representatives and in polls. And in our division of powers, it is the Commonwealth that has the ultimate power over zoning. I fear that what's being proposed isn't civil disobedience, but nullification, which is a path that is destructive of the rule of law. If we say here, even if we really don't like this law, "Oh, we're just not going to follow it," where does that path end? And I don't believe this meeting has the moral authority in this town to carry us, the rest of the town, into a war against the Commonwealth. First of all, we're like, what, less than 5% of the town's voters? 15,000 people voted the other day. We've got a few hundred here. But more to the point, if this town is so overwhelmingly against this law as to justify a hopeless legal battle against the state, why hasn't there been more effort in this town to get the law repealed? Now, as one of the earlier speakers mentioned, this law was passed on January 6, 2021. Perhaps our minds were on a different threat to the. Louis voted for the bill, as did Representatives Lipper Garabedian and Wong. All of Senator Lewis's colleagues and nearly all of the representative's colleagues voted for this bill. Now, neither of our representatives in the two elections since has faced a primary or general election challenger. And Senator Lewis has faced no primary challenger and only one general election challenger, our own Mr. Dombrowski. Now, I intend no disrespect towards Mr. Dombrowski, but Mr. Lewis not only won that seat in 2022, but he won more votes even here in the town of Wakefield. And Mr. Dombrowski, though he supports compliance with the law, has given his opinion that it is a bad law. If an opponent of the town, of the law from this town received fewer votes in this town than an out-of-towner who supports the law, can we really say that most of the people in this town, and not just the people who show up to a meeting at 8:00 AM on a Saturday, think that this law is a deal breaker? And doesn't a law have to be a deal breaker for us to blatantly violate it? If there's such a groundswell against it, I wonder why there has not been more of a movement to primary or challenge in general election our representatives who have voted for this law and continued to support it?
30 seconds.
And so, I say, as we go ahead, I fear, both at the state and at the federal level, that we are facing challenges to the rule of law. And if we want to hem in the people who will abuse the rule of law, we need to be a model of upright conduct ourselves. If we're going to point the finger at Beacon Hill or at Washington and say, "You're not following the law," we cannot afford morally or legally to have the finger pointed back at us. I say vote yes in Article 4 is the only option compatible with the rule of law.
Thank you. This side.
Sam Hockenberry, 18 Emerson Street. I am here on that, in favor of the proposal. First, I'd like to thank the subcommittee and our senior planner for the creativity of forming multiple small districts with different kinds of building structure and design to try to help make things fit in on the streets better and make a more cohesive vision of what is being developed. Second, this is a zoning change and does not require building production. So, by approving this, all of Albion Street isn't going to be completely redeveloped tomorrow. This happens parcel by parcel over years. So, we can slowly build and accommodate and plan for the changes in population and the makeup of the demographics of that population. Third, the population changes. I work for the town of Burlington. We've been doing a lot of zoning changes. We're proposing a mixed-use zone for the mall. In a fiscal impact analysis, mixed-use zoning, higher density, those generate more revenue than they cost the town in funding. Part of the analysis was also look at how many students would be added to the school system. In some areas, and this is again Burlington, and things change depending on the town and the type of housing, but Lord Baron Apartments has the highest rate of students going to the school system at .2 kids per unit. Lots of other apartment buildings, it's more like .08, .05. So, it is a very small number of kids per unit of housing. So, we're talking about maybe 200 kids at the top if it was fully built out, which comes to about 15 kids per grade level. It's one classroom. Now, this may necessitate other changes, improvements, additions, but this will happen over a very long time horizon. Finally, I just want to make clear that I think that this type of zoning, housing changes, does, it's an attempt at trying to make better sense of housing by putting people in proximity to businesses, grocery stores, being able to walk to the commuter rail, to be able to work in the city or any of the other places that are along public transit lines. And it makes for a more livable community. And when I was at a forum on Thursday, offices and business leaders and what they were looking for, I asked, "What does a government need to provide?" And they said, "Transportation and housing. That's what we're looking for when we're trying to find where our businesses are going to reside next. We want to be close to our customers. We want to be close to our employees. We want to earn the commute and have people come in. We want to attract and retain talent, and it will be harder without adequate housing and adequate transportation." This is a small step in that direction. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Colala, Boy Hill Ave, Wakefield, Greenwood. Listening to these guys in their comments, very interesting. In the process of a lot of this, you're going to wreck some neighborhoods. The people, in Greenwood, there's no commercial parking for businesses as it is. So, there's a few cars, but nothing. You can't expand businesses without parking. There's, you know, that needs to come into play. And they say cars, they allow parking for 1.5 cars. Who in the room has half a car? Anybody? No one. So, and you can't even open the doors in the parking spots as it is. So, you know, some of this is unrealistic. And for any community, I don't care if it's Burlington, or Reading, or Winchester, anybody to abdicate control of their land in their community, I think is nuts. You know, I would, I oppose it, and the traffic with density is going into the neighborhoods. They drive down Greenwood Ave to Oak Street to get to the high school, because you can't get down there any other way. It's just not a good thing. It's going to happen in each neighborhood where this development gets expanded to. And as previous people have said, you know, there's no guarantee it doesn't change. And as it changes, the impact will be more significant. But to think you can put commercial space where you don't have parking is nuts. I just don't see how you can figure that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Once again, folks, you got to get a seat. Be terrible to listen to all this and not have a vote, so you got to sit down. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Really good seats down here. Tellers will not count your vote, trust me. You're up.
My name is William Turner. I'm from 4 Lindberg Road. Mr. Moderator, if I believe that our town budget for last year was $104 million, is that correct?
Steve, you got a number off the top of your head?
105?
Yeah.
So.
220, 221.
All these towns that are being sued by the state said, "Go ahead, take away our state funding." Their average, Milton's revenue, well, their budget, was $192.5 million. They have Milton Academy, which, I think, 42% of their students, it's a private school, privately funded. Half of this town goes there. They have more revenue, all these towns have more revenue than Wakefield does. And we have more to lose with state funding than any other town right now. We have, our downtown has no, pretty much half the stores are closed or open state, or we have a building across the street right now that is condemned. Wakefield needs this state funding. It's a state law. We're not voting if it's constitutional. We are making it so we have a voice on what the zoning law is. Right? Do we have a map of what happens if we don't vote on this, what the state will make us do? I guarantee you, they are going to hammer us, just like they want to hammer Milton. We don't have the money for legal fees, because the state's going to make us pay for their legal fees. We had a person up here saying, "Property taxes are going to be higher because of the school." What do you think the property tax is going to be when we can't afford funding for certain town projects? We're going to have override, over-override, over-override, and it affects our property tax. People are saying we have overpopulation in our schools. That's on us. We have a Greenwood High Middle, Greenwood Elementary School that's in an old military armory. Why didn't we expand it? Greenwood a few years ago was pushing kids out into other, other town, a part of the town for schools. People complaining about parking. Didn't Wakefield vote against a parking garage downtown? That's on us. We did not plan for the future. We did not plan for expansion. We have a voice on this to actually control from, instead of getting hammered, because if we don't vote on this, we get sued and the town, and the state makes us do this. Like I said, this is a state law. If we don't vote against it, town goes, the state goes, "Okay, you're getting sued. We're going to make you do this." And then we lose funding. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathy Shine Kane, 33 Elm Street. First, I would reiterate virtually everything that the previous speaker said, particularly with regard to concerns over the law itself. Whether we like it or not, we're stuck with it. We have to do something. I am impressed and grateful to the town council, to the planning board, to everyone involved with listening after last spring's meeting to the public and trying to accommodate all of the concerns that were raised in the previous town meeting. The public has been heard. I hope that my fellow citizens of Wakefield paid attention to every item in the presentation that addressed concerns from previous, from the previous town meeting. But I'd like to distill this to what happens if we pass this, what happens if we don't pass it? If we pass it, we have zoning changes. That's it. There may be some building, but if you paid attention to the presentation, you know that those, that building has to be in compliance with all of the regulations. If we don't pass it, we run the risk of the state coming in and mandating its own compliance area. And we will have no, we will have no input on that. We face a lowering of our bond rating. We face losing what could be in the next five years, close to, what, $4 million in grants? The bottom line in that case, and this concerns me and should concern any number of you, the bottom line, if you're concerned about economics, is that your tax rate is going to go up if we do not pass this. We could conceivably find ourselves in litigation, and we may well be able to use town council, but we also may end up being liable for paying the state's legal fees. We also will be in a situation where town council and our legal counsel have to spend time that they would otherwise be spending on pressing issues in this town on the lawsuit that we intend to bring. I would urge you, if for no other reason than to keep your property taxes low, to vote yes on this.
Stacy Costas, 25 Way Ave. I have two quick points. One is, I'm voting yes. I urge everyone to vote yes. This is a way for us to maintain control of this process. There's been a lot of fear mongering about, you know, the state, this and that, but the newly revised map that's been presented is a vastly different map than we saw in April. And I really commend all the people who worked so hard on it. It's very clear that there's been a lot. that there's been a lot of work, thinking, and I think this is a terrific new plan. The fact that you were able to get buildings that are existing grandfathered into the proposed district, I just think is terrific. In terms of the fear mongering that we've been hearing about for schools, number one, I agree with what people said, that this is zoning only. This isn't a guarantee that there's going to be busloads of people coming in tomorrow. Number two, our schools are, it's true, they're, they're pretty tight at the elementary level, but there is absolutely room at the Galvin and at the high school. There's no question about that, and I confirmed that with Dr. Lyons, because I also was concerned about that question. We're in control of this process by voting yes. If we vote no, thank you, Ms. Elliott, for pointing out that we're a lone red dot in a sea of green. If you don't think the state is going to come at us and sue us and make us go through all of that misery, you know, think again. The other point that I want to make is that there's a lot at risk if we vote no. Every penny of that grant money, Metco, sidewalks, streets, special ed, will come right back here for money. That's real money that the town is going to have to find somewhere. And with the concern that people have about budgets, revenue, and appropriation of funds, I think that really needs to be thought about. So, you know, somebody earlier mentioned, you know, the fact that this legislative body voted no for a parking garage several years ago. So, you know, concerns about parking, we have the opportunity to be long-term, smart, strategic thinkers about this. Voting no, to me, is a short-sighted vote. I would urge everyone to vote yes. Thank you.
How you doing?
Brendan Higgins, thirty-eight Church Street. I think something that I have been thinking a lot about this process is that this is change. And there's a lot of fear every time change comes up. People say, "I don't know what's going to happen. What does this mean?" None of us know, and that's scary. We all want this town to stay as it is. We all want this character. We've all grown up in towns that have changed tremendously since we were children. I'd like to say, I find the conversation about schools being tight to be rather disingenuous and convenient. As someone who has two elementary school children, who has multiple friends or parents, not one conversation I've ever heard about, or anything, has talked about the size of classrooms being too tight. That finds, that strikes me as just very easily convenient. There are people here who say rather confidently that we can beat the state. I'm glad you're confident. That's our money that you're losing. I think some of the people who have said that, you know, "We can fight the government. We don't need their grants" are the same people that voted against schools for costing too much money. So ultimately, I think this is a good compromise. I don't think people who wanted more zoning initially necessarily liked this plan, but it is the best option before us to stay in compliance and to keep growing. Yeah, that's what I got. I'm voting yes.
Good morning. Nick Ivanoskis, eleven Chestnut Street, speaking in favor of the article. I've lived pretty close to the Albion and North Avenue areas. I walk in there a lot. I think it makes a lot of sense to build more housing there. A lot of nice commercial places. Seems like a good place if you have to build close to the train station. I think the points about affordability and improving the tax base make a lot of sense to me. And seems like the increase in the housing stock is actually pretty low. It's only that 1.5% number, which I think the presentation mentioned is just above the minimum to retain all those grants. And so it seems like a considered thoughtful way to comply with the new law and also retain those important grants. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think we should pass it.
Tiana Veldwisch, twenty-eight West Water Street. Again, I'm going to read a statement from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, passed by the committee at our November fourteenth meeting. "We, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, support the proposed MBTA communities overlay district zoning bylaw put forward by the town council for the November fourteen, 2024 town meeting. In particular, we support the location of the majority of this district near Wakefield Center and Greenwood Station to encourage walking, biking, and other transit around town, and thus reducing reliance on single occupancy vehicles. We support increased residential density in proximity to the commuter rail stations and local bus stops as a way to reduce the housing crisis without further exacerbating the climate crisis. We wish to ensure that the town of Wakefield does not lose access to state grant funding due to noncompliance." Thank you.
Mr. Doug?
Jeff Kleaps, ten Eaton Street. I would like to speak in favor of this article. I am not going to repeat the many eloquent statements made by a number of previous speakers, but I would like to point out that Wakefield now has approximately 27,000 people. That doesn't count the many visitors and workers who come to the community. We are never going to get a proposal that everyone agrees on. And I would like to commend the town, the town's leaders, and the large number of citizens who participated in the process over the past year to come to this meeting with a significantly improved proposal that addresses many of the concerns that people had. We cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good. If we vote this article down, we are back to square one. And another point I would like to make is that I think there are many people who fear that if we vote for this article, we are supporting development. If we vote against it, we are preventing development. That is not going to happen. Change is going to happen whether any of us like it or not. It has been happening for 375 years in Wakefield, and it's going to continue to do so. This is an opportunity for us to shape that change. Buildings are going to get built. Buildings are going to get torn down. Things are going to go up that we like, things that are going to go up that we don't like. This is an opportunity for us to have taken the temperature of the people in the community and what they think this community should turn into, and we have a plan for doing this. I would urge that people support this article. Thank you.
Hello, Brandon LaRosa, two Delano Lane. So I'd like to thank the town council. I think a lot of work has really gone into this, taken feedback from, I've been to many of the meetings, and I had a lot of concerns with the first article that was voted down at the first meeting, secondary to the elimination of a lot of single-family homes. I think everyone can kind of agree that that first article, at least the town voted against it, right? It didn't really fit the character. There's been a lot of work on this to really make sure that it has the minimal impact. And I agree with what all the other speakers have said. There's no way that state's not going to sue, is not going to win, and then our taxes aren't going to go up when we are forced to do what they're going to recommend we do anyways. You know, I have two questions for the moderator, and then I'd like to make a motion at the end. My first question was, with the current law that we have, is there anything preventing the town from changing zoning for other districts if people are concerned that this would add too many districts to change to more single-family districts?
Sam, can you answer that?
Through the moderator. Are you talking about like a floor amendment to change the maps?
No, no. I was asking like if, so a lot of people were complaining that this was going to add 1,400 or so units to the town. But in a future meeting, would there be any prohibition from us changing other zoning throughout the town to lower the amount of units we have in different districts?
So the way...
Sam, I think Tom knows, because it's more of a legal question, I think, Sam.
Yeah. There's nothing here or in the statute that we're, that we're acting under that would prohibit Wakefield from amending any other of its zoning bylaws.
Okay, thank you. So that was one of my points, right? So people are concerned with the total amount of districts that are being added. We could look at amending in the future other districts if we wanted to reduce density, right? And we could still vote for this to be in compliance, so we don't lose funding. You know, the other thing I just want to say, I think there's been a lot of discussion on this. So if possible, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to call the article to vote.
You mean move, move the question?
Yeah, move the question.
Say, move the question. Please say, motion to move the question.
Motion to move the question.
Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion on only moving the question, not the merits of the article? Any discussion on moving the question? Anybody? Okay. Okay. Two minutes, Mr. McCauley.
There's, there's a number of people in line still waiting to speak on the original.
Pardon?
There's still a number of people in line waiting to speak on the original. So I'd like to see if we could all be heard before we get to this point.
Okay, thanks.
Marcy McCauley, thirty-two Walden Road. I also agree, we should not move the question. I try to attend every town meeting. I, you know, I'm sure you know that, that I can, because it's very important that our voice and our vote is heard in this purest form of government that we enjoy in this town. And I do not agree with this, all of these people not being able to speak today, because when you come here on a Saturday morning, there's a lot of new faces. And it's great to see a lot of new faces, but these people deserve to speak, so I am against moving the question. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on moving the question? Yeah, come up here. Yeah. Wait, I got, go ahead.
Bob Mitchell, six Balding. Yeah, I've been coming to town meeting for probably thirty-five years, and I have moved the question myself, but we usually don't do it until at least everybody has spoken once. This is a, a lot of people here today, a very contentious issue. I think we should not move the question, but do it maybe after another six or seven people speak and wrap up today's meeting.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Carney?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'm excited about how many people are here today. I think it's important. What happened at the last town meeting is, we, we found out that not many people had heard about these zoning changes. So this subcommittee did a great job sending letters out. If we miss someone, we apologize. But they sent letters out, make sure everybody was notified. Now we have this kind of a turnout. We can't shut these people down. They have a right to speak, no matter how you feel. So I hope you don't vote for this other.
Okay. Anybody else on moving the question? All right. This requires a two-thirds vote. Tellers, ready? All in favor of moving the question? Put your hand in the air. Keep it in the air until you're sure you have been counted. Mr. Chines, did you put your hand in the air? Yes. Okay. Yes. Put your hand in the air. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, they're not here for aid, huh?
No.
All right, all right. Just wondering.
Just asking, what, for a friend?
Here goes your numbers, lady.
Yeah, I know. I've got it.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
How many?
Come on down. Come on down. Yeah.
Forty-eight in the north.
Thank you. No, yeah.
Sixty-seven.
Seventy-seven. All opposed to moving the question? Put your hand in the air and make sure you have been counted.
Yeah, it's not going. How many people are here?
Four hundred. My bad. There's not that many hands up tonight, will there?
Oh, I don't know.
There are people waiting in lines without their hands raised, but we don't know which side of the stage they are sitting. All right, why don't, why don't you take them?
You take them. You take them. You take them. Good call. Folks in line, you're going to be counted on this side, okay? Keep your hand up. Okay.
We got you. We got you.
We got you. Yeah. We got you. They got, they got you there.
Eighty-seven in the north.
Eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven.
Six-seven. Six-seven.
One-eighteen in the middle.
One-eighteen in the middle.
Motion fails.
Huh?
Motion fails.
No, it's two-thirds.
Yeah, I know.
What do you guys got?
Two-seventy-two, one-ninety-two.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, what is it? Two-seventy-two, no?
Right, one-ninety-two.
One-ninety, yes. Motion fails. You're up. You haven't gone yet, right?
No.
Okay.
My name's Jamie Moda. Live on Salem Street. Thank you to everyone who allowed us to continue to talk, and thank you for that presentation. That was very interesting. I think I would just start off by saying I'm going to vote no. There's a couple of reasons why, and some of them were opened up to me today. As someone who moved here as a 24-year-old and wants to live here the rest of his life, I do fear that if the state bullies us into increasing the amount of housing availability in this town, we're going to continue to keep growing and growing. And we are a town that doesn't even have a single two-lane road. Right now it takes 10 minutes to drive a mile if you're leaving at rush hour. I mean, do we even have the infrastructure to add another 700 units? Never mind the, I don't know how many right now, probably close to 1,000 units being built around the town. It's, it seems like Wakefield is becoming overcapaced, and if you look into the future, we're not going to have the infrastructure to handle it. I did not expect to be this nervous. The, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right for us to let the state bully us. What are they going to do? Take 2% of our budget? We can overcome that. I mean, Wakefield is a town. We moved here, or we grew up here because it's a town. Do we want to keep building up, or do we want to preserve what we have? I want to raise a family here, but if I fast-forward 20 years, and there's five, 10-story buildings all around the town, I'm probably going to move. And I just really hope that everyone who lives here, lives here because of the town it is, and does not want to see an overcrowded city. Thank you.
Anybody over here? Nope. Okay. You're up next.
Good morning, folks. Eric Wages, 22 Warren Ave. First off, I want to thank everyone on the planning board, on the commission, everyone in the town who's given feedback over the last year. This is a extremely emotional, and those of you who have to do the hard work, thankless job. So I want to thank you very much, because you probably don't hear it enough. I'm going to be voting yes. And I want to point out one thing. So I'm an engineer by trade, and I look at this as a data problem. So it was brought up earlier that this is simply a zoning change, and that is true. We are talking about an area which is already built up, that to make changes is really expensive. So someone's going to have to spend a lot of money to tear down a building to build an even more expensive building. That is more expensive than taking... This town, the traffic, the streets, if you're gonna build up and build up, it won't be a town anymore. I'd like to mention that on the screen, there was only one word I saw that was highlighted. It was bold. It was to use force, the word force. If anybody here wants to Google the definition of force, do so. I won't read it to you because you might think I'm a radical because of what it means. But I was wondering if all the residents of these new developments are gonna be forced to use the train, because that seems to be what is driving this law. We're following what the trains are guiding us to have to do. I didn't vote for a train. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Charles McCauley, 32 Lawrence Street. I'd like to speak about a subject that was brought up just a little while ago concerning the legality of this meeting to vote on this article. It was brought up that the state has the right to mandate changes that affect communities. Yes, they do, but in this town, I mean, at this time, the state did not mandate a change to this community's way of operating. It gave us an option in that vote of theirs. If there was a mandated thing, they wouldn't have given us our option. The option is to say, yes, we want to comply with this MBTA law, or we don't want to. Therefore, voting this down is not fighting or going against our grounding rules of rule by the people. We are a republic, yes, which means we vote, we rule by the consent of the people. The consent of this people three times has been no to this article. I am in agreement with that, and I will be voting no here, and I hope this body recognizes the right themselves to vote it down without any, any follow-on effects from the state. Using their ability to take away grant money is, I think, nothing more than a form of blackmail on the part of the state. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen.
I just have to correct the speaker on one point. General laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, which is the statute we're talking about here, says "An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size," and it goes on to describe the kinds of districts that we're talking about here. So the legislature has provided that we, being an MBTA community, must adopt some kind of bylaw that meets the requirements of the statute. Just how we do that, they leave up to us, but it would be incorrect to say that the legislature has not required it. They have.
Good morning. Elizabeth Lowry, 86 Green Street. First, I want to say I think the train was here before probably anybody in this room. I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but I do have some questions, and I think it's probably to you, Ms. Elliott. It's concerning Audubon Road. I feel like the spirit of the law has to do with making it so that people don't have to own a car to live here, right? Isn't that the spirit, it's not the letter, but isn't that the spirit of the law?
Through the law, or I'm sorry, through the moderator. The law states that they are looking to provide a certain percentage of the district within the half-mile radius of a train station. For us, that's seventy-five percent. Up to twenty-five percent can be located without of those, without, or outside of the half-mile radius. The particular Audubon site is accessible by ninety-five, so it is, it's part of why it was chosen. The comments at the public meetings were that it was kind of not adding to the additional congestion that people are experiencing downtown. Additionally, the town is working with surrounding towns and municipalities to look at adding a shuttle. Two-hundred Quanapawat is already required to be part of that, and Audubon could potentially be included in that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I was wondering how people who live on Audubon Road would get to the T. It just didn't make sense to me. Also, what is the affordability? There are, what, I think you said a hundred and seventy-six or something units there now? What's the affordability percentage of those units?
All of them are included on our SHI because it is a subsidized housing project.
Okay. So if a developer comes in, takes that down, and puts up this ten-story building instead of a twelve-story building that has four hundred units instead of a hundred and seventy whatever, how does that work, and how many of them need to be affordable?
Sure. That's a little bit more complicated to answer because there is a contract on that particular site through at least 2040. I might have to check with the state to see if there have any, have been any changes to that date. But as of right now, and it's managed by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is a federal government entity, and at this point, we don't know that it would, they would lapse that contract or let that expire. But again, I can't speak to that. Should something go up, there is a minimum requirement of ten percent of those units to be affordable, but as to what that number would be, it would depend on what the proposed structure would be, how many units they're looking at, what the parking is that they can provide, and that they have to meet the intent of the law as stated under any of the districts. So if someone were to do something as well on North Ave, it would be lower than a lot of the things that they could do under the existing zoning, which is through the special permit process. As you see, the tonal building is five stories tall. That could only be three stories if it were to be built under MBTA communities. So there's a little bit of a trade-off for anybody who's looking to do something by right. There is a lot, or there are a lot more restrictions, and they would have to meet all of those in order to be utilizing that overlay, as well as to continue forward. There are no additional discretionary zoning options if they want to change anything, like if they want to do less parking, or if they want to try to increase the height or anything, there is no option of that.
Well, my concern is, so if we lose a hundred and seventy, I forget, I think it's one seventy-six. Affordable units, where do we make that up? Because we do have to make that up, right?
We don't have to, but we would probably like to. And again, it would really depend on what somebody was proposing, and there are a number of additional units that are currently under construction. Should all of those that are under construction or have been permitted be constructed, we would be over our ten percent number, so it may be negligible in the long run.
And my last question. If, if we pass this here today, and the state comes back and says, nice try, but not good enough, what happens? Are we still in compliance because we're trying? Or, or do they say you're non-compliant? How does that work?
As far as I know, we would be considered kind of in the gray area of working towards compliance. I don't believe that they would penalize us as long as we continue to move forward. Any zoning change requires town meeting vote. So it's not like the state could just come back and say, hey, I need you to add three more parcels or something to that. That would have to come back in some capacity, or if, as it's been touted, that, you know, the, the district could change and increase by twenty percent of a requirement by the state. That can't just happen. That would require, again, additional review by the town because of the way that the town is set up. There is a vote that is required for any zoning change for a town that has town meeting. If there's a city council, then it goes through city council. It just depends on how the municipality's government is set up. That's part of why a vote is included.
All right. Thank you. I think we've done what we can do with it, and I think we should pass this.
Sorry.
Kristen McCray, 776 Main Street. The Massachusetts law seems unfair because the citizens around the Commonwealth didn't get to vote on it at a ballot box, and now a hundred and seventy-seven cities and towns are forced with having to come up with controversial plans to address zoning changes, and the zoning changes impact all of us. And I think it's unfair. It almost doesn't matter what plan you put forth. I think it's an overreach, and I think it's hostile that the state would also impose either penalties or withdrawing of funds to us. It's not a way that I would like to see state leadership treat us. We have density issues. It's already hard to maneuver around, and I can't imagine living with all these extra people and dealing with the construction. So I would vote no.
Mr. Mitchell.
Hi, Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding Street. I am gonna vote no on this, and I just want to encourage other people to vote no, and I'll tell you why briefly. First of all, some of the current speakers I want to address. Every time I've been coming to town meeting or any board meeting, I hear the same three really mistruths. Sometimes it's true, but most of the time it isn't, that any new construction will revitalize downtown, reduce our taxes, reduce housing costs. I've heard a number of people say that, and is there anyone here who believes that?
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
That's a rhetorical question.
No, no, that's rhetorical. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're not taking a survey this morning. We're gonna do that in a little while.
Okay. All right. I thought you could do a rhetorical question at town meeting. Housing is a complex issue, and we should all be, you know, kind of wrestling with that. I think right now, this is, is local zoning issues, which I won't get into, but I think right now what we have is a balance of power between a town and the Commonwealth of mass. And right now, I think we have a little bit of power in that. Not a lot, but a little bit. You have to remember, this is before the Supreme Judicial Court. Does anyone here know what the ruling is?
No, no. No. No one does. Go ahead.
That's a rhetorical question.
Okay. Another one. All right.
I'm not asking you or anyone else to respond. I think everyone gets that.
Okay.
May I come, I'd like to proceed and not lose any time over that.
Ten seconds.
I feel, you know, it's kind of ironic, I'm in a school, and I really feel like, I don't know if everyone, if other people feel this way, that I'm being bullied by the state house. If this is a good legislation, fine, let us pass it. I agree, there should be, there are many ways a state can encourage good housing for people. I'm all for that. I'm just totally against the way this is done. I think personally, we have time. Nobody's, nobody is spending money here writing checks other than Milton wrote to one firm in Boston. We've got plenty of time. There's no rush. There's no need to have fear. We can come back to this at another town meeting. If, if the state house starts rattling the sabers, believe me, they do not want to sue about a hundred thousand people living in these communities that voted no. As a politician, that's suicide. There'll be plenty of time. They will accommodate us if we need to come back and take another bite at this. So I think there's wisdom in just saying no today and just keeping our eyes open, seeing how the SJC comes down, seeing how the litigation comes down, seeing how this threat of taking our money away from us comes down. I want to see them do that. I think that'd be very colorful news in the Globe. That's my personal item, but I just encourage you to vote no, and thank you.
Good.
Delory, 16 Lawrence Street. I came here with an open mind. I'm a yes. The gentleman who called the question and his wife had to leave. They have a young toddler. I'm not gonna call the question because that was unpopular. I want all these people to get to speak, but I do ask if you're a yes vote, please hang in there. We will get to the vote shortly. I also want to ask my fellow neighbors to please confine your comments to new matters that have not been addressed yet. The law is the law. There've been some good questions, and I'm interested in hearing those. If you're a yes, please stay.
Deborah Fox, 12 Alyssa Drive. The first thing I would like to do is to apologize to all of the citizens of Wakefield who showed up in the spring and voted no three times, and yet still had to come back today. You're right. They say they didn't listen, they didn't listen. Well, they made a new plan. You're right. They're not accepting no, and I've seen this time and time again through the town with different things on their agenda that they want. They're gonna keep bringing it back. They'll find some way to bring it back. The other thing I would like to say is, today you found out that Wakefield is worth three point seven million dollars. Thank you, Mr. McLean. That's what our zoning is worth to us, three point seven. That's it. Sell the town to the state because it's only worth three point seven million. The state has no money. You heard the governor say, we have a deficit, four billion dollars, and she's not done. She's still spending money like crazy. There isn't going to be any money for grants. There will be no money for grants after you give it up. Give up our rights. That's what our right is to Wakefield. It's worth three point seven million. That's it. That's what it comes down to. So to those people who came before and came today to vote no, please stay and vote no. That's why you've been sitting here. That's why you came in the spring. That's why you voted no three times in the spring. The other thing I would like to add is that we have no idea what's gonna happen with grants. You have no idea. Does the town have to tighten its belt? Lots of ways to do it. Sell off the quinch buggy we paid fifty thousand dollars for. Sell off the second flag pole that we had to have for thirteen thousand. Save the ten thousand for the flex lane you're putting in. There are many, many ways to cut money in the town and still keep the by rights zoning belonging to Wakefield. The state would have mandated it. They did, but they can't force it, except by blackmail and extortion, and that's what they're trying to do. The last thing I'll say is, remember this in the spring when it's time to elect new town councilors. Remember who supported this and who didn't. You want a change? You want someone to help you and support you? Go by how you feel the town should be? That's where you need to be. You need to make sure you get down there and vote at the elections and not just show up when there's something important that's going to affect you directly. Thank you.
You haven't been up yet, right? Okay, you're up.
Kevin York, 10 Collins Road. I understand there's opposition to this. I think the subcommittee understood after the spring meeting that there was significant opposition to adding housing in town under this law, but I encourage everyone to look at the realistic probability of housing being added from this map. I think the subcommittee very smartly looked at ways to bring us into compliance that don't really have a chance of adding significant housing in town. When this was brought before town council to send it to planning board, one of the town councilors actually remarked, this seems disingenuous because it doesn't actually align with the spirit of the law, which may be true, but what it does do is bring us into compliance, and I think it does so in a way that really minimizes the opportunity to add housing in town. If you look at some of these character areas, they involve demolishing buildings, in some cases, very new buildings. That's probably not gonna happen, so I'm in favor of this because it brings us into compliance, and it does so The last thing I'll say is, remember this in the spring when it's time to elect new town councilors. Remember who supported this and who didn't. You want to change? You want someone to help you and support you? Go by how you feel the town should be? That's where you need to be. You need to make sure you get down there and vote at the elections and not just show up when there's something important that's going to affect you directly. Thank you.
You haven't been up yet, right? Okay, you're up.
Kevin York, 10 Collins Road. I understand there's opposition to this. I think the subcommittee understood after the spring meeting that there was significant opposition to adding housing in town under this law, but I encourage everyone to look at the realistic probability of housing being added from this map. I think the subcommittee very smartly looked at ways to bring us into compliance that don't really have a chance of adding significant housing in town. When this was brought before town council to send it to planning board, one of the town councilors actually remarked, this seems disingenuous because it doesn't actually align with the spirit of the law, which may be true, but what it does do is bring us into compliance, and I think it does so in a way that really minimizes the opportunity to add housing in town. If you look at some of these character areas, they involve demolishing buildings, in some cases, very new buildings. That's probably not going to happen. So I'm in favor of this because it brings us into compliance, and it does so in a way that adjusted after the spring town meeting. Thank you to the subcommittee for doing that, and I think they did it in a very smart way that should be a good compromise vote for everyone.
You haven't been up yet, right?
No.
Okay.
Eleanor Axelrod, 19 Sheffield Road. I'm voting in support of this. I had reservations at the last spring. I'm really happy with this plan. I think it's, you know, I understand the criticisms with the law itself. I think people have raised incredibly valid points about the process and how this law even came into existence, but at the end of the day, this committee has put together a minimum compliance model. As Kevin York said, it is as minimum as it can get. If you go, if you can pull up the slide, if at all possible, Slide 8, that gives the acreage, the overall impacted area is 54 acres. Wakefield is 7.9 square miles, which is 5,054 acres. So the overall footprint of this district is 1% of the town. So again, to echo Kevin York's point, I don't think it's going to have a big impact, and I think we can just check the box and not deal with uncertainty about being sued. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time, and thanks for everyone's effort and time in showing up today.
Wait, you haven't been up yet, right? No, no, wait. You haven't been up yet, right?
Not on this, no.
Okay, all right.
Julie Scott, Central Street. Again, thank you to the town councilors who brought this forward in this version. I appreciate all the time and effort that they put into this, and I thank everybody for being here. This has been very respectful, and I'm glad we didn't stop the discussion. The threats were inserted after Governor Parker left office. I mean Governor Baker. I keep hearing housing, but I keep seeing apartments. To me, apartments are not homes. They're hopefully temporary steps toward a home. We have not been talking about the growth and the building all over town. So when we looked at that map with the circles, all of us live in all different areas of town. Many of us live outside those circled areas, and we see growth and development in our neighborhoods. We've got Friendly 40Bs. We've got Mike's Gym coming online. We've got a lot of stuff coming up. I'm on the master plan advisory group, and in the first draft of the master plan, it states, and MAPC wrote this, that Wakefield is a mature community approaching buildout. And that was probably written three years ago. We have built or planned thousands of units since 2020, and in 2020, as referred to in the first draft of the master plan, it says that Wakefield had an about 8.5% population increase between 2010 and 2020. We all know, especially at the head of the lake, we've had probably 1,000 units or more come in since 2020. One thing that's missing from today's discussion, a lot of people don't know, there hasn't been a lot of state talk about this because this was signed into law, I believe, in August this summer when everybody was away, but the state has afforded you the ability through the accessory dwelling units law to build an accessory apartment on your property as a right. We have about 10,000 buildable spaces that I believe would be okay to build an accessory dwelling unit in the community. Let's say 5,000 people chose to take this right. That would be adding, in your neighborhoods, not in those circled areas, but throughout the town, perhaps 5,000 new units of living space, and that hasn't been discussed. We heard a previous speaker talk about schools and classroom population size not really being an issue. If anybody has the time, go to the town council webpage, hook on to the meeting links, and watch the tri-board meeting from a couple weeks ago. That's where the finance committee and the town council and the school department had a very informative meeting, and I thank all of them for doing that. The school superintendent talked about a lot of things, including that issue. He also specified that within the next 10 years, we have real concerns about the Greenwood School, the size of the school, and overall school space issues. In the slide that stated we have received $3.7 million of state grants over the past five years.
30 seconds.
That's a shockingly small amount. We need to reach out to our state representatives and our state senator to start to bring back more money. They also should be looking to solve the housing crisis by the way that it's actually been created. Massachusetts has no law banning corporate home buyers, and it should. Massachusetts is also not stopping, not creating legislation to stop corporate-owned, single-family homes that will be cropping up in Wakefield.
Thank you.
So I ask that we move our state legislatures to represent us more. Thank you.
Wayne Todd, 27 Jackson Lane. I'm a no vote on this, and I want everybody to know, I'm certainly not an anti-development guy, because I'm not. I think Wakefield's done a pretty good job so far in development. Look around you in Wakefield. Right now, there's approximately 1,000 units, and I could be off by a dozen, on 10 or 11 different projects that are in the pipeline that are either in construction or being approved by the boards. That's before this. So you've got 1,000, 1,000 units, and if I use the 1.5, there's 1,500 cars, okay, in Wakefield. I don't think we have to compare ourselves to other communities. I actually get a little offended when I hear the other communities, the MBTA, some of those communities that have approved this, it affects them very little. They're not having meetings in bashouts like we're having because it doesn't affect them that much. And to say, Malden's approved it, wow, there's a positive for you. I think you really have to look around. Look around what's going on, okay? You can't get up Wakefield Square. This is going to, whether you live in Greenwood, I don't care where you live, the density that's going on in Wakefield right now, it's ridiculous. We've done a good job. The town administrators told us that we're in good financial shape. I think we should vote no on this and have a state delegation, which I find strange, since 2021, our state senate and our state reps haven't gone to bat for us with this? There's some state reps in communities around here that are starting to go to bat. Look at what they're going to do in Tucksbury and Wilmington. They're not going to just say yes. They're going to try to form a group and go against us. That's what we should be doing. You hear about Home Rule, those people that represented us that voted, and it's been commented here, in 2021, when they voted, the state senate in this state voted unanimously for this law. And then I think there were only four reps that voted against it, and then Governor Charlie Baker signed it into order. In all that time, they must have known what would happen, and if there are representatives and they see what's going on in Wakefield, you'd think they'd look around. Vote no on this. Wakefield can handle it.
Whoever's phone is going off over here, really appreciate it if you turn it off. Thank you.
Marcy McCauley, 32 Walden Road. I'd just like to reiterate, and it can't be stated enough, thank you for all of the work to put this together because I know that there was a lot of work put into it. We attended almost all of the forums, and there were a lot of forums. So that said, I am still voting no on this, and I'd like to address, there was a young man who works for Burlington and spoke about Burlington, and ironically, in the early 2000s, I was the assistant property manager for Lord Baron Apartments. So spoke about that being the largest complex, one of the larger, it's 400 units, and regularly we would sign a lease with a family that was four to five people in a one-bedroom unit. And the reason that was happening is because Burlington was top-tier schools at that time, and I can't say that I blame them. They were doing, you know, the best that they thought for their children if they couldn't afford private school. So that was a regular thing at Lord Baron Apartments, and we, whether we agree with them or not, and I appreciate what the parents were trying to do, we still have to look at the infrastructure costs that are going to be coming to Wakefield to support this type of additional growth over and above what we've already spoken about that Wakefield has done. So the second connection I have to Burlington is our daughter purchased her home in Burlington, and she regularly says to me, Mom, it's easier to get around in Burlington than it is in Wakefield. And her in-laws live over by the Vogue and the high school. So enough said. She has to come in and go in that direction. But, and one other point, downtown shops, we're not half-empty in downtown. If you shop downtown regularly, you would know there are a lot of vibrant shops, and I enjoy going into those shops and speaking to the owners directly, and I know them and they know me. So please support our downtown shops more. One thing I want to talk about, someone said, talk about things that have not already been talked about. There's already a 300 average tax increase that just came out for your real estate taxes. So if we take that and look at the next five years, which is when the high school taxes are going to kick in, I spoke to Mr. Mayo, and he said on average, $1,400 for an average home in Wakefield will be the burden of the high school additional taxes. So if we take 300 average over five years, we're looking at 1,500 and add another 1,400 for the schools. So we're almost at $3,000. So if everyone can afford $3,000 over what you already may be paying, your $8,000 goes to $11,000, or your $11,000 goes to $14,000, I think that's great. Good for you. I'm really happy for you. But there are a lot of people that can't afford that, that type of additional tax increase. So one thing I look at 40A, 40A, as the evil twin of 40B, and we know what 40B has brought to this town. It's brought a really tough time for a lot of neighborhoods, and Nahut Street comes to mind. So I'm going to be voting no, and I'd like to leave you with this. It's a lot easier to give away your rights than to ever get them back. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Salt, Converse Street. I just want to take issue with something a previous speaker said. Anywhere a person lives is a home. An apartment can absolutely be a home. Wakefield has had apartments for a long time. In those pictures with trolleys on Main Street, there were apartments in Wakefield, and I really have an issue with this idea that only a single-family home can, only a single-family house can be a home. I just had to say that.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask people to vote yes on this.
No, 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 no. Over here. You haven't gone yet. Have you gone yet?
Gone.
Who hasn't, who hasn't gone? Okay, you're up.
Iris Sessions, 40 Richardson Street. I, first of all, I want to echo what Mr. York said. I don't think we got enough sort of focus and attention on what he said. There are those of us in the room who really actually believe in affordable housing in our community. I really, really wish our teachers, for example, could live in this community. I wish our firefighters, I wish our law enforcement officers could live in the community that they served. That frankly is not true right now, but I will say, I was in support of the plan in the spring. I thought it was actually successful, it actually sort of achieved some balance. That was voted down. The committee went back, they formed a new plan. Honestly, they formed a plan that really sticks it to the state. You want to stick it to the state? This is what the plan looks like. I don't know if you all noticed, but like Audubon Road, three-quarters of that block is wetland. They can't build on it. You look at Foundry Street, they are already built up. Nobody is going to tear down Grayston Lofts in order to build another Grayston Lofts on top of it. I mean, this plan is the absolute minimum that we could possibly do and be in compliance with the requirement. So I understand people are afraid of development, are afraid of more building. None of these plans that we're talking about, Mike's Gym, that is not in this district. It is not covered by 40A. It is 40B, by the way, which we would like to be able to partner with the state on a little bit, to have some control there. We are asking for control over our zoning. This is control over our zoning in the most minimum way possible. So I encourage people to vote no, and frankly, I'm going to call the question because we've heard it all. So I make a motion to move the, what does I have to say, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, she can move the question. Is there a second?
I encourage people to vote yes, but I want to call the question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Anybody want to speak on moving the, hey, 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 hey. No, 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 no. That's my job.
Okay.
Thank you for your, your help. Anybody, okay, ready? Yeah, no, we've got a second, and we've got to move the question. Okay. Tellers, ready? Let's go. All in favor of moving the question? What's the point of order? Yeah. What, I can't hear you. The mic's not on.
You did not ask for any discussion on that.
Oh, that's true. That's, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got confused with that. Is there any discussion on moving the question? I'm sorry.
Scott McCauley, I've already spoken several times, which is fine, but there are a few people there that haven't spoken yet, so I'd like to at least let these people speak, and I'll sustain from speaking if that's okay with everybody.
Anybody else on moving the question? Why don't you come right here? Save us time.
On occasion that myself and Mr. McCauley agree, I do think that the people who have not yet spoken on this issue, who have a desire to, should be allowed to speak. I think it's a couple of people, so I think we should hold off.
You know, there's two people left. Why doesn't you withdraw her question? Yeah. There's two more people.
Jeff Clayes, 10 Eaton Street. I'm just, there are only one, two, three, four, five, six, including me.
We're talking about the people who haven't gone.
I know.
There's only two people left that haven't gone.
I'm asking that if we could simply let these few people speak, would the person who asked to move the question be willing to withdraw her motion if we can just finish off these few people and be done with it?
Did you hear, did you hear his advice there? Are you withdrawing or not?
I haven't spoken yet. Just one quick thing, that everything's been said multiple times by multiple people. I've been a hard no since April.
This is while moving the question.
Hours and hours. No, I'm sorry.
Do you want to move the question or not?
No, I just have one comment.
No, 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 no.
No, I, no, I don't.
I've got a ton of comments right now.
I haven't spoken yet. I just want to speak.
No, no, you're, no, we have a motion before the floor to move the question. That's all you can comment on.
No.
Are you in favor of moving the question or not in favor?
I apologize to my two compatriots because I don't, I think we will have more. I do not withdraw my request to move the question. I think that we should move the question.
Okay. Any further discussion on moving the question? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Make sure your hand is in the air. My, I'm not voting. Ah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that enunciation. Oh, Jesus. Oh. I know, I know, I know. Oh. Oh.
119.
119.
Yeah. 121, 119.
Yeah, I got it. 120, 121, 119 so far. Yeah, I got it. 121, 119 so far. Yeah, yeah, I will. Yes, Mr. Mayo?
147 in the middle.
147?
147 in the middle. All opposed to moving the question, raise your hand and make sure you keep it in the air. Sorry, am I going to go straight down here? Maybe it's me. Yeah. Down to the mic. Down to the mic. Steve wants you to announce it in the mic.
25 in the north.
Come on down here. Come on down here and give it to me. Thanks. 42 in the middle. How much? 19 in the west. What are the numbers? 387 to 86. Motion passes. We will now vote on the main motion. In other words, we're voting on the MBTA motion, okay, just to be clear. The town amend the zoning bylaw and map as described in the article. All in favor? Yeah. On this motion? Yeah. Okay, what is it? Here, you explain. Yeah, right, yeah. Okay. Okay. Is there a second on Mr. McCauley's motion for paper ballot? There you go. Anyone want to speak on having a paper ballot?
Can I speak without going up to the microphone?
No. Really? Where are they? Are they here? Don't show on it. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Giants, 34 Hopkins Street. I oppose the motion for a paper ballot. We will be doing a hand vote count, and so we will be getting an exact tally of how people are voting. I think a paper ballot will just take some time that we're all giving this morning. On a Saturday when we could be doing other things, I think for the sake of expediency, I would ask the members here to vote no.
Kathy Shine Kane, 33 Elm Street. I would like to ask a question of the person who proposed this. What is the rationale? Is there a rationale?
No, that's okay. No, he's just making his motion. No, 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 no.
Okay.
Don't waste your time, Scott. There's no member-to-member question.
I am arguing against a paper ballot. I will try to say this diplomatically, but I believe that the request for a paper ballot is simply a delay tactic and is designed to slow us down. I would strongly urge us to do what we do all the time for all of our other votes and go with a hand vote. They are counted twice, and they are legitimate.
In support of your motion for a paper ballot?
Yes. So, I often feel at town meeting when the critical things that come up, that some people often feel like they're in a fishbowl if they're voting against things. Some public employees that may work for the town, some people that might be on different boards in the town. I just thought that this might be a way to collect votes without people having actually raised their hands to possibly be criticized for the votes that they took today that might be either in favor or against this. Taking a paper vote is going to be actually quicker than having to go through the entire room and count twice. So, that's fine.
Mr. McLean on paper ballot?
As Mr. McGoughlin said earlier, we're all big kids. I don't think anybody in the room is terribly terrified of expressing their opinion, based on everything that I've heard. And over the years, I've joked, half joked, that this town meeting violates the Eighth Amendment, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment. Here's your proof.
Any further discussion on the motion for paper ballot? You want to discuss?
Yeah.
Okay.
Betsy Sheeran, 27 Spru Street. I just would like the audience to know that we will have two paper ballot votes. The first one is to see whether we will take a paper ballot. True. And the second one, if it should pass, will be the paper ballot. So there's going to be two paper ballots if this motion passes.
Wait, wait, but we can take a hand count on...
Well, no, it has to be paper.
Yeah, okay, Tom.
The town clerk is correct. Our charter provides, and incidentally, on my tombstone, it's going to say I didn't write the charter. The charter provides, "If a motion is made and seconded to conduct a secret ballot on any main motion under an article, and such motion for a secret ballot is supported by 10% of those voting, then the vote on such main motion shall be taken by secret ballot." The vote on the motion for a secret ballot shall be conducted by secret ballot. So, we are on a process here that requires two secret ballots. The first only has to win by 10%. And the second would be a majority vote.
May I speak to my motion?
Pardon? Can you what?
May I speak to my motion?
Yeah.
So, in an effort to save everybody time today, because coming out here on a Saturday is really daunting for a lot of people, and we should have this during the week, I'd actually like to rescind my motion. And I'm still voting no.
Stop, stop. As much as I'm with you, there's no applauding. Not a pep rally, although a sigh of relief comes over the crowd. All right, we are now voting on the main motion. I will reread the motion. "That the town amend the zoning bylaw and map as described in this article." All in favor, raise your hand. Keep your hand in the air until you have been counted. Hey, Tommy, that was really good. You have a bevy of them, but that was good.
Don't say it, I'll come to tears.
I know, I didn't want it. Yeah, to the microphone. Why don't you say it in there? Will you say it in the microphone?
92 in the north.
89 in the west.
Where's Giants? Where'd they go? All opposed. Put your hand on the air and keep it there until your vote has been counted. Huh? What'd you say? Going to pass? Okay. Is he going to move for reconsideration? I'll move into the next article right away.
Immediate.
67 in the north.
81 in the middle.
56 in the west.
309, 204. Motion carries. Article 5. Article 5. Okay, okay, okay. Don't let the door hit you on the way out. Article 5. "To see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical Town Hall, ASME Council 93, Local 317. Thank you for your polite, non-speaking town, and raise or appropriate transfer from funds of sufficient sum of money to carry out the purposes of this article. We'll see what the town will do it." Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to all of you that came out this morning. On Article 5, "That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical ASME Council 93..."
Is there a second?
I haven't even made the motion yet.
Huh?
But that's okay.
Well, I was trying to move. I was trying to move before you know what.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, let me begin.
Okay. I was distracted by the...
Are you ready now?
Yeah, yeah, I am. Go ahead. Thank you.
"That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical ASME Council 93, Local 3117, for the period of July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027. And to provide therefore, the town supplement the personal services accounts of various departmental budgets by appropriating and transfer from free cash the amount of $53,941, and by appropriating and transferring from water receipts to the Public Works Water Personal Services Account the sum of $6,119, and by appropriating and transferring from sewer receipts to the Public Works Sewer Personal Services Account the amount of $6,975 to the following personal services account. Accounting, 7229; Building, 7018; Police, 2114; Fire, 3207; Council and Aging, 4066; Public Works, 3518; Town Clerk, 7312; Treasurer, 5938; Assessors, 3617; Task Collector, 4814; Veterans, 2726; Health and Human Services, 2382; Water, 6119; Sewer, 6975, for total of $67,035."
Is there a second, Mr. McLean?
Thank you. As I mentioned in the spring town meeting, I didn't get this done in time, so I'm happy to be back here today for Article 5. Article 5 approves a three-year contract for the 23 members of very hard-working and dedicated employees of the clerical union. For the most part, the members of this union are the many faces and voices that the public interacts with when either visiting Town Hall, the Public Safety Building, the Senior Center, or contacting the various departments on the phone. This contract goes through June 30, 2027, so it is a three-year contract, which I'm very happy about. Contains the same cost of living increases as approved for other unions in town under the town council, which is 2.5% per year. It also adds additional steps at the end of each grade at 1.75, and upgrades a senior assistant position in the DPW. It is a good and fair contract for the town with a total cost of $67,035, with $53,941 from tax levy, $6,119 from water receipts, and $6,975 from sewer receipts.
Mr. Sullivan?
Got it right. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 5? There being no motion. The motion is that the article, "That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical ASME 99 Council, Local 3117, for the period of July 1, 24 to June 30, and that the amounts be designated," as Mr. Mayo has read off in his motion. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article 6. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including water, retained earnings, and sewer retained earnings, to supplement the water and sewer budget for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. See what the town will do about it." Mr. Conway?
"That the town appropriate by transfer $160,975 from sewer retained earnings and $501,119 from water retained earnings in order to carry out the purpose of this article."
Is there a second? Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Department of Public Works is requesting $160,975 from sewer retained earnings and $501,119 from water retained earnings to supplement the water and sewer budgets for the period of July 1, 24 to June 30, 2025.
I had to remind you this time. You're welcome. We're not even.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 6? Oh, so I should go to the microphone. All right, there being no further discussion. "That the town appropriate by transfer $160,975 from sewer retained earnings and $501,119 from water retained earnings in order to carry out the purposes of this article." All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article 7. Hold on. Do we have a written... Do we have a written motion? Eric? Tom, do you have a written motion? Okay. Tom doesn't have a written motion. You want to give it to Mr. Mullen? Okay. Thank you. All right. Article 7. "To see if the town will vote to add to the town bylaws the following sections after section 58.1.3GH. The building inspector shall prepare an annual report to the town report. In addition to summation of the monthly reports, the town administrators shall include a list of new major buildings that were inspected. Major is here defined as at least three stories high and 10 housing units. The definition of major may be defined in the future by the town council. See what the town will do about it." Eric, you're up.
There are two parts to a motion that would change the zoning bylaws. The second is the words themselves, and the first is where it would be located. And this differs from the printed motion. I move... I move that the town vote to add to the town of Wakefield bylaws the following paragraph. To follow the paragraph in the section on building inspector that begins, "The building inspector shall prepare a monthly report." And, "The building inspector shall prepare a yearly report to the annual town report that in addition to a summation of the monthly reports to the town administrator shall include a list of the major buildings that were inspected. Major is here defined as at least three stories high and ten housing units. The definition of major may be defined in the future by town council."
Whoa, 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 whoa. Is there a second? There you go.
I heard a second.
No, you can't. No, you can't. Don't be changing those kind of rules. Okay. Mr. Reed, you may proceed.
Last... Hello? A couple of weeks ago, we saw in the item the picture of the former Redman Hall, and it says eleven units planned at thirty-three West Water Street. I would like amendments like that to appear in the town warrant being something like this. Okay?
Okay.
And it says at the top for the way in the back, thirty-three Water Street, then it says three stories, eleven units, and then in this case it describes it. And I do not give the full title of the Redmans Hall because I can't pronounce one of the words, and neither can the spell checker spell it correctly. The annual town report is a volume so thick that you can store it in your own bookcase and find it if need be. It's a story of the continuing chapter of Wakefield history. The zoning, the person to describe when a new building is done is the building inspector because he's last one to approve that it can be used. So, in essence, that's why the, this article is presented. I could speak at length, but who would like it?
Perceptive. Any discussion on the motion under Article seven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. May I?
Yes, you may.
Brian McGrail, eighty-one Elwick Road. I certainly don't object to Mr. Reed's article. The question I have is, I think, Eric, when you read it, when the motion that you made, you did not include the word "new", and maybe that was intentional or not.
I did not think of the new...
It does say new. Brian, it does say new.
No, when he read, I think when he read it, he did not include that word.
Oh, okay.
In my third line, which of course you don't have before you, it shall include a list of the new major buildings that were inspected.
Thank you. And then the only other question is, is there a definition of inspected? Because, you know, and the reason I ask is, is the building department is quite burdened, as all the departments are. And I think if we're going to put a bylaw into effect, it just needs to be a clear definition of what they're going to do or what they have to do. And so, you know, there's various inspections that take place in the building department, so perhaps that needs some clarification on what the term inspected means. Is that a new building? Sometimes they inspect buildings pursuant to renovation permits. Sometimes there's plumbing permits, electrical permits that come out of that department. So I just don't know what the intent of it is.
I think if you look...
Just so, I know you don't have the motion in front of you, but it does say "the" building inspector.
Okay.
It doesn't just leave a general inspector. It says "the" building inspector, and it does say "new" buildings. Mr. Mullen, am I correct with that? In the motion, the new motion.
Frankly, I'm having trouble with this because I can't find a section fifty-eight point one three.
No, no, no. We don't have to mention it. You can find it by saying this paragraph, and then you just assertive lower. That is my intention.
I can't find the paragraph that you're referencing. Look, it's beyond my ambit perhaps as town council, but I have spoken to Mr. Reed before and suggested that one constructive way of approaching this might be for him to deal with the bylaw review committee and come up with a revised version of this before a future town meeting. That might require a motion on the part of the petitioner for indefinite postponement, a friendly motion for indefinite postponement.
I friendly object. I say, I say vote for this, up or down. Record the result. If the vote is positive, he can rule it out of order, and then the bylaw committee, which is doing a major recodification of the zoning bylaws, can choose to put this in or not put it in, and we can continue with the next article.
Okay. Mr. McGrail.
Yeah, I'll just continue quickly. I agree with town council. I think the other thing, this has a provision that this definition of major may be defined in the future by the town council.
Yeah.
So we don't even know what that is. So it's putting a burden on the building department that they don't even know what they have to do at this point, especially if the town council does not opt to give an definition. And certainly, town meeting doesn't know what they're voting on right now because there is no definition of what major is. And I also agree with town council that this is the perfect thing for the bylaw review committee that's in session now, that I actually think Mr. Reed is a member of, because I do go to most, if not all, of their meetings. And this is the type of stuff that they review to make sure that we don't have bylaws put into effect that really, nobody knows what they really mean, and then they have to be interpreted in certain ways that might be disadvantageous to the town. Thank you.
No, no, there's no question. There's no question.
He said, "Major is not defined." It is defined.
Where?
In the middle of the three lines, the five lines.
Oh, it does say "new major building", but then at the bottom it says "the definition of major to be defined in the future".
Yes, but at present.
Oh, okay, at present. Okay, okay, all right, okay. So that's, it does say "new major buildings", "major new buildings", "new major buildings", and then it can be defined in the future. Okay, we clarified that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is not two-thirds, is it, Tommy?
No, majority.
Because, yeah, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion does not carry.
Thank you for staying.
Article eight. The town will vote to see, the town, to see if the town will vote to appropriate...
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Could I just have the vote numbers from Article four? I don't know if you announced those.
Yeah, I did.
Excuse me, four. It was very quick. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Main motion, three hundred nine, three zero nine, in favor. Two zero four, opposed.
And was that a two-thirds vote required?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to approve a town meeting action to be recorded in the chapter A, seven oh four, miscellaneous town meeting votes of the towns code, which the town meeting action shall provide the following. Pledge not to use the town resources to enable violations of human rights and international law by Israel. The town shall refrain from purchasing Israel bonds or other securities issued by the state of Israel as long as Israel remains in violation of international law. And the town will refrain from purchasing goods and services from or investing or depositing funds directly in any company or financial institution that facilitates and enables Israel's violations of international law and human rights as part of the Israeli occupation of Syrian Palestinian lands, or as part of Israel's apartheid as detailed in the United Nations General Assembly Resolution A slash R E S slash E S dash ten twenty-four, adopted September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, including but not limited to those companies listed in the occupation section of the investigation project of the American Friends Service Committee, available online at H T T P S investigation dot A F C, A F S C dot org slash occupation. And no officer of the Wakefield Police Department should be permitted to receive training from Israeli police force departments. Israeli military units are trained who provide training at Israel police departments or military units. And the future annual reports of the town shall certify that the town complied with this meeting during the report, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Sukar.
Thank you. Motion for Article eight, that the town vote to approve the town meeting action as described in this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Sukar.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, can you please order lights on the front?
Yeah, can we turn the lights down here? Beyond my pay grade.
Thank you. Pledge not to use town resources to enable violations of human rights and...
You gotta speak up a little bit. You gotta speak into the microphone.
Yeah. Pledge not to use town resources to enable violations of human rights, international law by Israel. Stated here...
You gotta speak into the microphone so they can hear you.
Stated here by the U N General Assembly during July two thousand twenty-four, and the I C J. They confirm that Israel is using apartheid and racially segregation practices in both Gaza and the occupied West Bank. According to the Committee of the Elimination of Racial Surrogation, they confirm that Israel is under segregation of apartheid law. For both Palestine and Gaza as well, Israel has used bombs and missiles to attack Palestinian hospitals and schools, which even are considered as illegal. Considered as illegal under national law. These crimes constitute as bombing U N schools and hospitals on a daily basis. Over forty-one thousand civilians have been killed in Gaza, as well as the majority of those killed are women and children. In accordance to the nineteen ninety-three Oslo Accords, Israel still occupies the West Bank in accordance to areas B and C. Israel has furthered annexed areas that are yellow in the West Bank. Further, annexation plans of both Gaza and the West Bank are currently in effect in Israel under the Likud Party. A few months ago, South Africa, a state that was even under its own apartheid system, has brought up to the I C J to bring about a genocide clause at the I C C. It's a U N body for the International Criminal Court. Israel has also bombed two countries that are permanent members of the U N, which are both Lebanon and Syria. Starting from October eighth, the Israelis have enacted measures to implement evacuation orders throughout southern Lebanon, across the Lutani River. Civilians have been bombed by white phosphorus. In accordance to the U N General Assembly, these weapons are prohibited by international law. The Israelis have also bombed the Lebanese capital Beirut on a daily basis, and have even enacted evacuation orders. Prior to these atrocities in Lebanon, the Israelis have also attacked U N peacekeeping forces under the terminology of UNIFIL. It's the United Nations International Front in southern Lebanon. These forces enable peace and security throughout the southern Lebanese border. Also, Israel enacts an occupation and annexation of both Lebanese and Syrian land. For Lebanon, they're known as the Shabaya Farms in the south, and for Syria, they're known as the Golan Heights. These were taken in the nineteen sixty-seven war under U N General Assembly and the I C J. Any single land in a use of war is prohibited by international law. As time moves forward, South Africa as a country was even faced by its own apartheid system. This apartheid was enacted by the South African government, which prohibited people based on religion, color, and other forms of ethnic divides throughout South Africa. As time moves forward, both by boycotting, sanctioning, and even divesting from South African companies and goods have helped bring about in the United South Africa, which even today brings about their I C C court case against Israel. For Wakefield in the United States, many companies, such as Amazon and Google, are being used to target Palestinians, even used to identify those in protest. And we've seen that supporting these companies are against international law for their uses of tech, computer chips, et cetera. Also, a company such as Caterpillar, they have used their machinery to both destroy and to diminish Palestinian infrastructure, such as homes, houses, and roads. We think that these companies should not be allowed to operate in Wakefield. There are better alternatives in this town. We also believe that Wakefield should not use our police force in current practices with the Israeli military nor police. The Jewish Voice for Peace also states that more U S police forces and our military organizations have been training with the Israelis. They have used discriminatory acts and violent tactics used by the Israeli forces, which are in accordance under or against international law. We believe that Wakefield should not participate in any forms of practice nor training with the Israelis. Questions and answers? Can Wakefield really have an impact through this town meeting action? Yes, we believe so. I think even here, as today, we're saying in this auditorium, which is named after General Galvin. Him and many other forces in World War II fought to protect human rights and dignity for the Second World War. The U N is also an abiding member, which was formed in the aftermath of World War II. We think Wakefield should be in accordance with international law with the United States as it's gone against. Hypothetically, would this action impact businesses operating in Wakefield that are owned by Israeli citizens? No, as long as the business is not directly facilitating and enabling Israel's violations of international law and human rights. If a non-complicit vendor cannot be found for an essential good or service, should the town use a vendor that is less complicit in Israeli crimes? Yes. If avoiding complicity entirely is not feasible, reducing said complicity is the next best option. Question four. Would this town meeting apply indefinitely? No, it would only apply as long as Israel continues to violate international law and human rights. The goal of this action is to help end Israel's crimes and impunity and support human rights and to form a just and everlasting peace for all in the Middle East. That's it.
Mr. Lieber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the ability of every citizen and every group in Wakefield to have the ability to have the floor at town meeting to bring up issues that may be relevant to the town. the town. This is not one of those issues that is relevant to a town meeting. I have extreme empathy for all victims of violence and war. This includes in Israel. This includes in Gaza. This includes Lebanon, Syria, Darfur, Ukraine, South Sudan, and all of the other places in the world where there is violence, including where there is targeted violence. I have empathy for them. But that is not necessarily an appropriate place to bring to town meeting at a local level for a non... Just a performative action that is actually not going to have a direct impact. There was no presentation by the Finance Committee because there was no money that would be affected by this particular vote. To have a meeting that is actually held on the Jewish Sabbath of Shabbat and have this brought up when rabbis in town, and I have talked with two of them that have congregations, are unable to attend as they are following their own personal beliefs. I am here despite the fact that I would prefer to follow my own personal beliefs. I recommend that we stand up to all hate, that we support the actions that actually are supportive of all of the citizens in Wakefield and of the world. This is not the way to do it, and respectfully, I move for indefinite postponement of this article.
Is there a second? No, 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 no second. Discussion on moving the question. Now, look, I understand that this is a very, you know, passionate article, and I understand that you have lots of views, but we're going to try and limit...
It's not moving the question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, sorry, indefinite postponement, I'm sorry. Still got that "moving on the question" on my mind. All I'm saying is keep your comments on moving the question to the procedural aspect, not necessarily the merits, okay? Does that make sense? Yes, it does. Anybody who wants to speak on whether or not we should move the question? Or not move the question, indefinite postponement, sorry. Yeah, you were first, so you... She's next. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I am actually for indefinite postponing.
Okay.
I am a Jew.
No, 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 you're...
I am Lena Feldman. I live on 34 Holland Road in Wakefield.
Yes.
I've been in this community for 27 years.
Okay.
I brought my children, my family.
This is, I hate, I don't mean to be disrespectful. This is moving... No, no, this is on indefinite postponement.
I'm sorry, I confused you.
You're in favor of indefinite postponement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let me just check with Mr. Mullen here.
It's debatable that in light of the case of our subsidiary elections, the debate motion can go fully into the merits of the...
Okay, gotcha, thanks. All right. Okay, keep going, sorry.
I think that Israel is fighting not for Israel only, fighting for peace, fighting against terrorism, against Hamas and Hezbollah. Israel did not start the war on October 7 of the last year. I actually was expecting from the entire world sympathy towards those people who were killed, kidnapped, raped, behaved. It was horrible. By the way, shouldn't forget that more than 100 people are still in captivity, and the right of Israel to defend itself is actually exists, should exist and should be supported.
Okay.
I feel very bad about all the people and hardship in Gaza, in Lebanon, in Syria. But I want you to look up how many rockets fly every single day.
But you're, this is move the question. Please.
No, no, it's about Israel and about the state of Israel. Give me just a second.
I understand, I understand, but please, please, should we move the question or not move the... Or, I'm sorry, God, I'm no... Sorry. Should we move for indefinite postponement?
Yes.
Do you want to... You think that, okay, and for the reasons that you said.
Yes.
Right. Do you have anything else on the procedural aspect?
No.
Okay, okay.
Can I talk?
Well, no, no, it's, if the main motion came up, you can get back up. That's no problem. Anybody on moving the question? No, God, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, hey, that was traumatic back then. Indefinite postponement.
David Bisson, 20 Hancock Road. I'm against indefinite postponement. We've only had one commenter on the main motion, and it was against the motion. I plan to speak for the motion. Should I do that now, or is there going to be an opportunity to do so later?
No, no. Anybody, anybody on the procedural motion of indefinite postponement? Yeah.
Risa Webb, 1148 Main Street. Just based on the disingenuous warrant being brought on Saturday morning when the Jewish community can't be here, for that reason alone, I move that we don't, we move it, get rid of it.
Indefinite postponement. Let me help you out now that I've figured that out.
Jocelyn, 20 Hancock Road, last name Rhonda. It's just clear that there's a lot of thoughts to be shared here. I think as the first person who is supporting indefinite postponement actually has a lot of thoughts that she'd like to share, and I think it could be of value to this community for us to allow those to have a say, to kind of share their thoughts with the community because I feel like it's a very important issue.
Okay.
Hi, Allison Lee, 101 Gold Street. I'm against indefinite postponement because every day a genocide is being carried out and more people die. So the longer we postpone, the longer that continues to happen without our taking action.
Okay. Indefinite postponement.
Hi, Christopher Bossy, 89 Outlook Road. I'm in favor of indefinite postponement for the exact same reason I was in favor of Article 4. This meeting is not a foreign policy body, and we know nothing whatsoever about the, how this would be implemented. The Finance Committee has not commented, the Town Council has not commented, the Town Council and Town Council have both not commented. And this simply, Wakefield and Melrose can disagree, Boston and Fall River can disagree, Massachusetts and Florida can disagree, but when we deal with foreign powers, when we deal with the claims of Israel or Palestine or whoever, we are Americans and we ought to speak with one voice and our local organs of government...
Okay, so you...
We ought not even to comment on the merits of this motion because this is not the right body for this motion, which is why I support indefinite postponement.
Anybody, anybody on the procedural motion of indefinite postponement?
I am against the postponing. There's no postponing of the war for the innocent citizens dealing with it, and there's clearly a lot of views to be shared here. I think it's only fair that we get a chance to say our piece. Thank you.
Do you have a point of order? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, what's your name? I'm sorry, yeah. I'm back on move the question still.
Haley McAtten, 71 Forest Street.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Anybody else on move the question? Indefinite postponement, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm Wayne Taylor from 9 Omaha Road. I really find this offensive because it shouldn't even be here, it shouldn't be on this thing. So I say, not just postpone it, I say get rid of it.
Well, no, 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 no.
The Jewish people need our help, not turn against them. And remember October 7.
Okay.
Okay?
No, no, procedure, thank you.
I don't want this amendment. I don't want...
Okay, well, you want to vote for indefinite postponement then. Okay. Anybody else on the motion for indefinite postponement? All right, so we take the motion. All in favor of indefinite postponement? All opposed? I don't think we need a count on the motion for indefinite postponement carries. Thank you. Here we go. Mr. Mayo, you gonna do something here?
Mr. McLean is. Yep.
Oh. You know, Mike, you get all these new perks, huh?
Yes.
Hey, before you, before you all run out, WCAT, they do a fabulous job, all right? I mean, on the run, you know, yeah. I mean, this, this thing, this thing has a hiccup, boom, the write-down, they get it done. You know, except for Ian's phone speaking out, we did really well, falls the whole thing, but no, they do a great job. Mr. McLean?
Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve this town meeting with thanks to the moderator, town clerk, and WCAT, and the people of Wakefield.
Is there a second? All in favor? Goodbye. All right, where are we going?